Like to call the Graham County Department of Education Director meeting, March 5th, 2024 to order. And Mr. White, would you lead us in prayer, please?
Yes. That's great. Dear God, we want to thank you, God, for giving us today. Thank you, God, for the many blessings of life that you've given to serve one of us. And so thankful, God, for the beautiful, warm sunshine, God, that we felt yesterday. And, you know, we know that the rain might be made for the young, God, but we know that you know our needs and God always wants to pray that you just continue to bless us the way, God, that you have in the past. Dear God, we just want to pray, God, that you should just be here with us today. Because we've got this board meeting, God, we pray, God, for your servant, uh, board members, and God always wants to pray, God, that you help us, uh, God, as we all strive, God, to serve the children of this team. Again, we do love you, we thank you, we praise you, God, for all that you do. There's things I have to pray for, so we can.
We have Ms. Laurel Beasley's first grade class here this morning to lead the pledge. And after you lead the pledge, I'm going to ask you your name and maybe your favorite subject or your favorite thing you like to do, and just be thinking about that. Okay? All right, let's start over here and just tell me your name and maybe something you'd like to do or your favorite subject or whatever. Speak up now, I can't, I'm about dead, so I. Bella. Likes to play, okay? Art, good.
Scholar, what do you want to do as a college?
Tell us what you like. You like to skateboarding?
Do you like to play outside?
He's bashful.
My name is Adam, and I like to, um, like.
My name is Troy, and I like to do, um, play outside.
My name is Bex, and I like to learn Cherokee language.
Very good. You understand?
Play, uh, you. I like being in my.
My name is Jinder, and I like to play outside.
Good. Very good.
You guys did a great job, thank you.
Thank you. Now you have to go back to class. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda for today?
Don't move.
Do I have a second?
I said.
All in favor? Any opposed? All right. Do I have a motion to approve the February 6th, 2024 minutes?
May I ask you something, Mr. Mayor? Um, I had, I had requested that the item claimed for salary information for nurses and school resource officers be taken off of the agenda for this month and put on the agenda next month because the board did not have all of the necessary information that they needed. And since we all need the same information, so I just wanted to let you know that.
That, yeah, that was on the, uh, February 6th minutes?
Yeah, that's on the February 6th minutes.
Oh, okay.
And I asked for it to be moved to the actual agenda this month, so that could be done. I was going to leave it.
Excuse me. Do I have a motion, uh, to, for the amendment to, uh, postpone the letter K, uh, about the nurses?
No, it's on there. I want to reiterate that it goes on the next month's meeting, which will be April. Maybe we just need to change that to April instead of just next month.
Okay, okay. Do I have a motion to approve that, to change it to April?
Do you have a motion?
Uh, do I have a second? Second, all in favor? Okay. Ms. Klein, we have anybody signed up for?
Yes.
All right, let me, uh, Letitia Wiggins has signed up. And it looks like we've got several. So, uh, Letitia Wiggins has given her three minutes to Mr. Moody. So, Mr. Moody, you may go.
Mark chapter 10. And they brought young children to Jesus, but he should pray from them. His disciples rebuked those that brought him, but when he saw him, he was blessed and pleased, and said unto them, Let the little children come to me; do not forbid them, for such as the kingdom of heaven. Jesus doubles down in Matthew 18. He said, Therefore, whoever comes as a little child is the greatest in the kingdom of heaven. Whoever receives this little child in my name receives me; but whoever causes one of these little ones who believe in me should be paled for a millstone or hung around their neck and be drowned on the sea. Obviously, children have a special place in God's heart, and I fully believe that every child is fearfully and wonderfully ungrateful, as Jeremiah 11 says, that there is a plan and a purpose, and a hope and a future for all of them. It's the main reason I became an educator, to help in that process and to protect them while they do. But at the last board meeting, it got so contentious, we had to ask students to leave. The very ones we're sworn to help at all costs. The topic was basically about character. People's integrity was questioned, in particular, the top three school positions, some were even called liars, in some extent, violent. Now, when it comes to character, there's two, two things that take place, either have good character or bad character. Galesians 5 says, good character is love, joy, peace, patience, kindness, goodness, compassion, faithfulness, kindness, merciful, and self-control. On the other end, 2 Timothy 3 and James 3, bad characters, lovers of self, money, bustle, arrogant, abusive, ungrateful, unloving, gossips without self-control, reckless, conceited, have a form of godliness but denying power. Goes on to say, where these exist, confusion and every evil thing are. Simply put, my dad would say, in good character, when somebody does look right, but nobody else looked. When one has good character, they are tempted to be brought on a lies to see division. We see that 2 Timothy 3:12. Those who desire him for good, God, lies will be persecuted. Then more so, far straightens 15:33, says, the evil company corrupts good character. I always tell kids, you're always the people you try to run into. Vice versa, to convince them when you have good character, I think it's called politics. Usually, they don't have it. Had a friend and tell me one time that a person come and said, hey, are you a Christian? And his response was this, you tell me. We could, we could say the same thing about character. It's not what we say, it's what we do. It's not our words, it's our actions. So let me tell you what I observed about the character of the top three leaders in our schools, the chairperson, the vice chair, and superintendent, because their, I will agree, their character is big question. Let me tell you why. For, because the character of the leaders is the character of the school. For they also take the school in the direction that it goes, because where the head leans, the body follows. I've known Mr. Nelson for more than 40 years. He's taught for over 50, he's a teacher, coach, bus driver, school coordinator, volunteer, now working with him 14 years as side by side as a teacher. One of the best teachers I had a privilege of working with. He didn't tell me how to teach, he showed me how to teach. And I'll be honest with you, I was jealous. If you get some more color experiments than I did, I never could catch up to him. He's like, he's not a violent man, but when the time arose, he went and fought for our country overseas. What me, they don't know about him, though, is this, he approached the school board to ask to be compensated with his teacher pay because his family could not make it just on military pay alone. He was turned down. But let me tell you something, he went and fought anyway. The Lord provided for him and his family, and he came back to school with no indebtedness, no grudges, and still was an excellent teacher. So let's look at Mr. Carrington, 50-plus years, again, teacher, bus driver, director, principal, superintendent, an exact, an excellent example of a servant leader to me. He modeled me by being intentional about building relationships to be aware of all the staffs needed by being in the school's day. Can't help someone if you don't build relationships with them, know what's going on. And that's a daily thing. Ms. Knight spent most of her career with a child advocate for those who are considered disadvantaged, but we call him exceptional. Anyone that knows anything about the E C department is, it's one like to be a teacher, you have to have special heart to be an E C teacher. And that special heart of hers followed her as she became superintendent. Now she's a child advocate for all children, all students, no matter who they are, where they've been, or what they've done, or what they've accomplished or not accomplished. You ought to see the things she's done with the academy, our partners do for these kids. She's been named educator for you twice, and then she superintendent of the region eight, which is almost the top eight superintendents in the whole state. She didn't compete for the super junior of the state because she knew it'd take time away from her job here at the school. She's had a flawless evaluation for 25 years now. The three of us combined have almost 150 educational years of experience within, a century, and they have. Their character is the school's character, the child advocate, the teacher, bus driver, coach, servant, leader, volunteer. We should all be like that. Now, when it comes to school board, the first question everybody asks is this, why are they running for office? There's only two possible answers. It's either for kids or personal agenda. It's for students or they, they want someone, they're out to get somebody, help their family advance, or just be in control. Like I said before, if you're going to ask, are you a Christian? You tell me. The same thing could be asked from our school board, me, and even everyone in the community. If someone was asked, any of us, if you're for the kids, what would you tell them when we say, you tell me? But instead of asking it myself, I think I would sit back and watch, and the truth will come out, and it always does, and I'll live with this. I was even looking, but you got from Mark, you know, the culture was in bad times, bad civil war, nothing like what it's like today. But simply, Mark 3, a house divided, beat to stand, cannot stand, things like with the school. If the school was divided against itself, kids versus a genius, that's good, we must stand. Thank you, and God bless.
Okay, he's next. Carolyn, you're the next.
Good morning. Good morning, it's Carolyn Nelson, and I'm the daughter of Biden. And I am nervous, so we just have to bear with me. I just want you to know, you just want me to know, and I am here because I want to be here. And because it is very devastating to pick up the grand star and to see your husband's character being smeared. And not only his character, but the character of the school board's attorney, of Mr. Davis, and in the past, the, the school superintendent, of Mr. Knight. And these two women have two other churches jobs that I can even, uh, cover here. And plus jobs, they have families to take care of. They do not need what some of them have been giving. They need our prayers. And in the case of Biden, he has made a statement concerning school board members being, uh, being, having the permission to be on the, the agendas. And I am saying this in my personal, personal, uh, opinion that I think this should have been handled privately. It should have been handled one-on-one. He should have been taken aside, shown where it says in the rulebook. This one, it says, we can't be on the agenda. That would have given him the chance to have said, I was wrong. I'm sorry. I will go to the other school board members. I will tell them that I was wrong, and show them what, what the rulebook says. And then I will say, is there anything else that I should do? This would have settled the problem. It did not have to go to the grand star. You know, everyone in this room, I'm sure, and I know I have a point in my finger at someone else. We all have done that. But yet, we need to remember that saying, that when we point a finger at someone else, what, we have one, three fingers pointing back at us. And sometimes when I think of that, I think, you know, maybe that's why God made the hands the way that he made them, to remind us we have three fingers pointing back at ourselves. And the question I have for the school board, for each member, is to ask him or herself, in the past two years that we've gotten away from talking about the kids, what do they need? How are they doing in school? How are, how are their grades? What is troubling them? What's going on? What's making kids want to commit suicide at the age of 12? These are the things that the school board should be talking about. It's the kids. If I had heard what he said one time, I have heard him say it 100 times during the 39-year seat time, it's all about the kids. The kids. School board, school is made of, mainly children. The kids. We have gotten away from that. I mean, I'm not here, I don't know everything that, that goes on, it's just what is in the, in the newspaper, mainly. But when it comes down to that, it seems like that most of the things going on within the school board, uh, meetings, has to do with our school board rules being violated. It has to do with, uh, what, what a coach, uh, is drawing as a salary, maybe, things like that has nothing to do with the kids. We've gotten away from it. And I know that most of these people on the school, they don't want to get away from it. But things have come up, and you get to talking about that time goes, and things that are really negative to talk about. The kids. And Graham County is blessed to have many, many good kids, good teachers, all the people that work for the school system, those that keep it clean. I mean, the ones that work as, as guards to protect our kids. I mean, everyone that loves to serve their, uh, their food to the mornings and the afternoons. We need to be thankful for these people, and that's what it's, it's all about. And I just want to add this. You know, in according to favor, Jesus handled this very well. He was outside the temple. When a crowd came up, they were dragging this woman, and they were shouting, and they were wanting her to be stoned. Because they said, and they know how bad she is, all the bad stuff she has, has done. And they kept humbling, they wanted Jesus to do something about her. But instead, he bent down, took his finger, started writing words, they're writing the words into the dirt. And all the time, they were all around him, they were shouting. And then he got up and he said to them, you who are without sin, cast the first stone. And when they looked down, they thought he was writing, they became very quiet. And one of them, they started walking away. And you could hear the rocks being thrown down on the ground. And what was it that they had seen that Jesus was writing in the ground? Their sins. I just wanted to say this. If any school board member, members has made plans to attack someone today, if, if those people do not want to change their minds, change their hearts, then I just want to say, I have a bank of stones to them, if you need more of them to throw. Thank you.
Eric Reese. Good morning. Thank you for recognizing me. Thank you for the time to come and speak before you. Uh, thank all of you for being here. I'm here mainly to ask some questions and also to give a personal opinion about something I just found out about. And oftentimes, when you find out something about, there's so many questions, you don't know what's going on, you don't know the thoughts behind it and such, but I've had the privilege since I've been here of knowing the school resource officers and, uh, and in some ways, working with them and appreciating them and praying for them and getting thanks for them for all that they do for our students. Some of you may not know me, but I work a lot to, to do everything I can to help the children, uh, youth, the staff, Graham County Public Schools. And I believe in that with everything that I have, with all my being, with all my breath. My mother was a school teacher, that helps. I have a long history of volunteering and working with, uh, school systems and doing everything I can. And some of that comes to my belief that, uh, if we give the children a fighting chance, we give them a chance in my starting out in school, then they'll become adults that are ready to be able to contribute back to the, uh, uh, community and have a better life if we, if we do everything we can now to help the children, to help them out, to see that they have all that they need, food, warm clothing, everything that they need. And people that have our time to them, to love them, and make a difference. And as you know, it only takes one person to value somebody and love them and, and hear them, look out for them, they can make all the difference in the world. And so what I heard yesterday, and it was, it was late, and so I don't know all the information, uh, the concern that, um, school resource officers, my understanding now that they're under the, uh, school system, personnel from the school system, and the concern was that this would be changed, that they would be part of the sheriff's department in the future. And so I wasn't real clear why that is or why it's happening, but I do know that it's all about relationships and that it's real important that school resource officers, you know, they have a, have a dual role. One, they have to be trained, you know, everything about law enforcement, everything. And then with the added pressures of our society today, uh, they have to be ready for the instant to lay down their life. The other thing is, uh, about relationship, uh, we didn't have school resource officers in my school growing up, way back, uh, the custodians were the ones that oftentimes befriended, uh, the, uh, the, the young boys and stuff and talked some past on their way to them. And I have one, I remember, I thought about running for the V A, and I had others that, you know, else I, that talked to me about, you know, different things. And so they were, they were smart. They were smart. And some of them had, uh, worked in the mills and roping the bags and, uh, wore themselves out when they were, as, as a student at the school. So my, uh, reason for being here, uh, than being brought this to my attention and also being asked to come and support of that, uh, if, if there's not a reason, um, I, I would like the, uh, resource officers with the school to, to stay under the, the school system, um, so that the school system can work with them, train with them, be able to, uh, see that they have all that they need to be able to take care of our kids and continue that relationship from year to year so that they can, uh, be a friend, not only a resource officer, but also a friend to our students and staff there to help build that relationship, that caring relationship, that loving relationship, that relationship that'll make a difference in the life of their children. And so, um, I know that I didn't have a lot of information about this, and I was speaking a lot from just a little bit that I had heard. So I hope that I will hear more about this, to understand it better. And, uh, and again, just want to say a word of thanks for our school resource officers and also let them know we love, we value them, and we'll help them in any way that we can. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Reese.
Thank you.
Melvin Millsaps.
Thank you. It's good to be back with my colleagues, you know, I appreciate you guys. I love Graham County schools. I invested a lot of my years in school. I love the kids. I love the staff. And I'm the best for our schools, as I'm sure I should do. I too am concerned about the possibility of changing the status of our S R Os. I've worked hand-to-hand with S R Os many years. I know the value of relationships that they build with our students. I know the value of relationships they build with our staff. I know how important they are. And I know that it needs to be a consistent funding, a consistency. I really, I'm here because I don't understand it. My landing just is something they broke, they'll fix it. So maybe there's something that I'm missing here with this potential change? I want you to explain it to me. I want somebody to explain it to me. I did reach out to every board member. I heard back the morning, thank you, Mr. Carrington. You reached out to me? I did. I sent an email to.
I checked my email, and I only have one.
They stuck me in our quarantine.
Millsaps.
Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry, they probably stuck you in the quarantine.
I don't know where it went to, but.
I don't know, but anyway, I did.
I did get an email, but it was not asking for a response. It was just making a statement, and I checked it this morning.
I did ask for a response, because I wanted to understand, I don't understand the rationale behind this potential move. You know, if, if S R Os, they're in place, it's worked for years, we have their phone in front, I'm not sure, or state or federal, why in the world would you want to take those positions and put them under county, in a county, in the county budget? We know how to do it, those phones, kid, but when you've got something assured and to move it and change it, I don't understand it. Maybe you can help me understand it. But I would ask you to please reconsider this and don't do this. I don't think it's the best for our schools. Thank you.
And one of my former students, Carissa Robbins.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I think that a, a lot of this public comment business has to do with the school resource officer transition with the sheriff. Um, I've heard several people say they don't understand how this could work. And I'm, I'm still on the fence about it. I will say that. And I don't want to hijack anybody's presentation that they hijacked for anybody today, because I feel like a lot of our public comments stuff should have been last instead of first, because there is a lot of feeling the lights here. And, um, so what I am going to ask, there's a lot of things that I think that will be transited today, and I don't feel like there is enough time for you guys to hear what you need to know to make an educated decision about my child's safety. I feel like we owe it to our kids longer than a five-minute discussion. I also would ask if you guys could possibly do something closed session. And I, and because I don't want everybody out in the cyber world to hear what is going on with my child's safety right now at this moment. what is going on with my child's safety right now at this moment. It scares me. Every time I hear that on Facebook Live, it kind of creeps me out because I don't know who's listening. I don't know who's hearing what our comments are. I don't know who's hearing where we're excelling, and I don't like that. However, I'm here without a choice. I wanted to speak later, but here we are. I feel like there's a lot going into this. I value our SROs. I love them dearly. They're friends of mine. So are people that work with the sheriff's office. I think there are pros and cons to both. But I feel like you guys owe it to my child and everybody else to take more time to make an educated decision and not just have your mind made up. For me, I've heard this stuff for weeks, and I've been on the fence about it. So if it takes me that long to decide what's right for what I feel is my child, I don't see that you guys can do that in just a second. I know that our sheriff's office is working hard and they're presenting that because they have a budget coming up. So if they are going to help, they they kind of do that reasoning and hear us today. But I guess my thoughts on this are, I'm kind of being different to either or, as long as my child is safe. And I feel like that kind of needs a larger discussion than what can be done right here in a few moments' time. So that's all I'm asking.
Thank you, Ms. Ross. Do I hear a motion to close the public comment period? Do I have a say? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, reports and discussion items. Ms. Knight?
Yeah, so we've got an incredibly long agenda, so I won't take very long at all. I will be officially announced in my retirement as of June of one. I've had thirty-five wonderful years for Graham County Schools, and I have no regrets. And I wouldn't change anything that I've ever done for the students, staff, and the community. I just feel like that my time may used to be my own. We, I need to be a full-time nominee. And that's more important than the stress of this job. And recently, the emphasis, I feel like, has been pulled away from what's important and short. So with that said, there'll be, at some point, the board will be tasked very soon with getting a new superintendent search underway, and I'm sure they'll be getting a statement out to everyone regarding that. There's also a few other retirement and key positions in the school system, and so you can expect those to come in soon. There's a lot of changes underway with Graham County Schools.
Okay, there's a lot of people in here. I'm not sure all who's here. I'm going to start with the principals of high school, Mr. Matheson. Oh, Erica's here. Okay, I'm sorry, Erica.
Mr. Matheson sends his apologies. His wife had a procedure this morning, so he wasn't able to be here. All's went well. They've just not made it back yet. At the high school, things that are going on. We recently administered the statewide ACT February twenty-seven. That is a state ACT for all juniors. And then we are currently in the window of the ACT Work Keys, which is a test for seniors that have completed ACT halfway. We're really proud this year that we're right at fifty-five percent of our senior class has completed ACT halfway this year. So that's a huge increase over the last few years, so we're really proud of that. Also, our president catered a meal for the CTE Business Advisory Council. I've seen that on social media, but they did a phenomenal job. So we're going to brag on those kids. They did a really good job. In the guidance office, our local scholarship packet is rolling out in the next few days. It has twenty-five or thirty scholarships in it, so we want students to be aware of that. Athletics, we're finishing up our winter sports season, and we're rolling into spring sports. Baseball or softball had their first game yesterday. They had a really big win. I wish I could count fourteen to two. Baseball will have their first game today. Track has a couple track teams coming up this week, one Wednesday and one Thursday. And then recently, we had indoor tracks, Zoe Shuler won her ninth individual championship for a triple jump. Really proud of Zoe. And also our wrestling team competed in the individual state tournament. They, when the tournament overall was a team, and we have three state champions individually.
Pretty impressive.
We're proud of our kids.
Ms. Wall. Oh, there you are.
First of all, I want to start off and say that I had a former pastor, and every Sunday, he ended the sermon by saying, go be the face of Christ this week. And Mr. Nelson, Ms. Knight, Mr. Carringer, I want you to know how much I appreciate that because I see that in you every day when I run into you. I also want to thank you because because of you three, I admire you all so much and what you mean for Graham County Schools that you make me want to be a better educator. And I appreciate you so much. It is going to be a big loss that you go and join the Graham County. I too will be retiring two blocks first. So tough decision, but I think it's time, like Ms. Knight. So I did appreciate everything and having the opportunity of being with Graham County Schools. And I'm honored that's where I'm going to end my career. Start with that. February, those of you that have been in the school system, you all know February is a tough month for teachers and staff. It's kind of that long month where it's kind of cold, and there's not a lot going on, and there's not a lot to look for for a few months till spring break or something. So we've tried to keep things as active and as busy as we can because the end of the nine weeks ends this week. And then it's getting close to testing time and the end of the school year. So our middle school's been very busy. We have had so many activities that support our curriculum. I don't know if you follow the Rockville Middle School Facebook page, but you'll see what all the wonderful things our teachers are doing with our students. Mr. Burdette and Liam Lynn are our teacher, and also Paige Gross. They have done a cross-curricular activity as they've been studying the Holocaust, where they have made shoes. And even in the careers class, they've talked about how important design is for tennis shoes and different various kinds of shoes. So they've tied that all into the Holocaust study. We've also took our our students, and it was almost the whole middle school, on a trip to the Lost Sea over in Tennessee. And they were able to look at the different cave formations that they study in our science classes. They got to experience the total darkness of the cave, and they learned the effect, the effect that the darkness has on the fish that they have in the lake in the bottom there. And it was a very interesting field trip for the kids. Mr. Burdette and Ms. Knight also, they have started a school business where they are selling hot chocolate and also a school store, and that's a part of their careers and entrepreneurship classes. The track team had a successful meet this week. We had two young men, Cameron Allison, he set three school records, and Samuel Wachalta, he set two old school records. And Chloe Adams, she was very close to breaking the school record. So that was great for their first track meet, so I expect great things from them this season. We also have our first softball, nice one, today, in Andrews, if the rain falls off. Kids were excited about that this morning. We had our spring flame dance, or it was really our winter formal, but we had postponed it on February twenty-third. I'm thinking about, probably about three-fourths of the middle school was there and had a great time, all dressed up and looking nice. We're also finalizing plans for our eighth grade post-trip. We have about sixty-eight individuals, that includes eleven chaperones that are going this year. It's one of the largest groups we've had in several years. And they've been participating in activities from here to the coast. Yara, Ms. Francine, has been able to help us with the bus, to help people with the bus. So we will also be making several stops at some college campuses, so students will get to be on some college campuses, including an ECU satellite campus that they have on the coast where they'll get to do actually some programs there, and the kids did that last year and really enjoyed that. A lot of these activities tie into our Global Leaders program that you'll be hearing a little bit more about in a little while. And the Global Leaders is trying to get kids to realize that, you know, the world is bigger than than ourself and start being aware of like water conservation, clean air, poverty, food security, and recycling, and, you know, all the things that they actually could be a part, maybe on a small scale, but, you know, that one person can make a difference. So our kids are learning a lot about the Global Leaders.
Ms. Hoo.
Thank you. At the elementary school, we're just moving all toward that wintertime push and all towards spring. We had Rocket Reed this last month and had four hundred and thirty-one people show up for Rocket Reed, which was a great turnout. The Delta Kappa Gamma Alpha Iota Chapter had a book drive this past weekend, and they donated four hundred thirteen books to the elementary. So we have divided those out and allowed teachers to add those books to those classroom libraries, and that was very, very welcome. Wanted to talk to you a little bit about the Charleston trip. I know that you've approved the trip before, but I didn't know. I know Field Trips is on there again. Wanted to just discuss it again. But we're getting close to the time that we're going to go on the Charleston trip. This coming, the twenty-first, off the land, we're going to have our parent meeting. Right now, we have thirty-five travelers total, eight adults, and twenty-seven students signed up for the trip. So we're getting excited about that. It is through the Explorca Travel Company. They provide the coach and everything. It's a package deal, but then we get out of Parkinson's. Over in the morning before we leave to look over the bus and all of those type things. But I know you're well aware of the trip, and it's my opinion, I'm pretty sure you've already approved it, but we are getting close to that time. We're just, we're packing up and getting ready to go, and the kids and parents are getting excited. I do want to also acknowledge that there are several people on the board of the running that's given over thirty years of their life for any one of the schools. When you're willing to do that, I mean, you're a great public servant to your community. Also want to shout out to Ms. Knight through her leadership. The COVID years were the hardest years in education I've ever been in my life. It literally, it wrecked, it wrecked me, and it wrecked my teachers doing the best that we could. And through all of that, I feel like Ms. Knight was very transparent. She worked hard to keep the doors open, the lights on, with the kids in front of us as much as we possibly could within the guidelines because she knew what I knew. The internet in Graham County, if we were going to rely on it, then we'd get it at home. It was not fair and not equitable. And she did everything she could to keep the lights on during that time and keep us all there and keep us in front of kids as much as possible. And I feel like through that time, which was the most difficult time for me, other than the passing of my mother, the most difficult time for me in my educational career was during that time. And in my opinion, you were rock solid. And I want to thank you for all your service and I did want to acknowledge that.
Ms. Prue, do you have anything for us?
Yes, sir.
Francine, you have anything?
Hi there. Should be in front of you. It's been a while. Mainly lately, Europe has been working a lot on our budgets, okay, and helping to best help our cohort in Graham County Schools, which is seven, eight, nine, ten right now, and how I can do non-finance assistance to the grades that are outside of that cohort. I'm happy that we got it approved for ten thousand three hundred dollars to help the middle school for their bus, okay, for our college exploration. Tony's set up a wonderful itinerary. It's been great, and I can't wait. I wish I could go. I can't sit on this mountain with this leg or I'd volunteer. No, it'd be great. What I'm really proud of right now is the high school after-school program and the credit recovery. I was really concerned when I saw how many students needed come for credit recovery. We were only getting a few, but now they're truly bumped up, and I counted this morning, and I have eighteen students that are attending for credit recovery. And for tutoring, there's probably about ten more every day. So that's very beneficial for our students, which carries on. And I was really pleased about that.
Natasha and Ms. Williams, do you have anything for us?
Good morning. As always, I work to try to present you the data from Kelso, Social Workers, and Social Workers. This is your data for the month of February. Those numbers are indicative of the nature of what social workers, counselors, and nurses do. And I know I say this probably regularly, but they are a tremendous asset to your school system. They are the heartbeat of children's needs. Appreciate it if you would take time to look at that data and ask any questions to my help. Thank you.
Ms. Prue didn't have anything to say to us, but I'm going to say something that she said to me. She just got through dealing with a twelve-year-old kid threatening suicide. We have a problem in this school. If kids that age are threatening suicide, we need to start. She's the only mental health worker we have, is to my knowledge. Is that not correct? So just one for your all's information.
Mr. Nelson, can I also say that last night, we received a very significant tip on the tip line that our school system funds to look out for the content that's searched on computers and on school devices. Sunny was instrumental in assisting a student at an hour seven thirty last night, who was dabbling in some very dangerous content. So the information that you have in front of you is just a snapshot, just a small picture of lucky trained health professionals and social worker students.
Kristen, do you have anything for us?
I want to start off by saying I've been here twenty-nine years, and I'm very thankful for the leadership that I've had opportunity to work under. I'm very thankful for Ms. Knight, who's been a mentor for me and exceptional children since I was back in college. I can say that she has been an advocate for children with special needs, like Noah. I have always been able to go to her or know that she has the best love and support for all kids, no matter what their abilities are. But she has been a lot and a very helpful and great mentor for all the exceptional children, all the years that we have been here. And I thank Mr. Mitty as well. He has shown his great love for children, all through God seeing him up here. He goes above and beyond what I think I'm doing. We're losing a lot of really good people for our school system who truly love and support and care daily and go above and beyond. Extra hours on their weekends, they're here. Loving and supporting and working for our community, provide opportunities for children in our communities that don't get better opportunities elsewhere. I thank you. And I'm very glad to have been an opportunity to work under this leadership as long as I move in forward. I would like to speak about what Jamie said. We had a great crowd for Rocket Reed. A lot of kids came out, so excited, enthusiasm that day for kids, and even on the elementary ground was was phenomenal. They were quite excited about coming. The doors are just open in a steady strength, now two hours. Coming up on March the sixteenth, we have a children's fair that will be over at the RHS Connoisseur. It's free. We have all kinds of inner agencies within our community and in the surrounding communities, communities, counties that are joining us for that. It's a true Sesame Street event with professional super broers. It's not just somebody just in a little costume. This has been a coordinated effort that has been going on for several months. It's free to all children. A lot of activities, a lot of things that you can get, and I'm one of the young ones, but I loved it, absolutely loved it to come out that day. Also, I'd like to invite everyone to put on their calendars that we are back with special Olympics this year. We're going to Jackson County. I've been invited to attend over there April the twenty-sixth. And we've got four counties that are joining us, and we're really excited. You know, we kind of stepped back from COVID, didn't know how to have the opportunity to attend. But we're getting back on track with that, so very thankful for that. So a lot of events going on towards the end of the year, a lot of busy things going on. So maybe you'll work, but I can't, I'll have to say thank you to our leadership team.
Have I missed anyone that's not that's not on the document?
The directors.
Yes.
You want to update about the school safety grant?
Yes, if you're not on the document.
So yeah, I'd like to say thank you to Ms. Knight too. She's been a great boss. She asked to let me dress how I do, which they had to come to work. So it's been great to work with and advocate, as I said. As you know, we got the new grant this year. We were one of, you know, very few counties to get behind me. We did three hundred thousand dollars. We're supposed to appreciate it. That's sort of our state or local, we're failing to just to have keeps kids safe. So we're real proud of that. You know, we've got a good site school. got a good site school that I feel that we're, we're gonna add to it over the next several months. We've ordered the PA system. Uh, one thing crucial as far as achieving kids' safe and teacher's safe is communication. And both our intercom systems are not active. So we are having that brought in this week. Maintenance is gonna be putting up for the next two or three months. And then officers will be trained on it this summer. So that has been ordered. Over spring break, we're gonna have, uh, our exterior doors, uh, some updates. And we're gonna rekey again. We're gonna set to rekey all the interior doors to the school system. Uh, the same keys have been floating around for over thirty, forty years. And so it needs time for it to change. Also, we need to reduce the number of keys in case emergency where people are not following through, trying to find the right key to the right door. Uh, we then want to, uh, know what we're gonna place the digital radio here at the hospital. We have digital communication here with the red. We have already placed on our buses, which allows us to communicate with our buses without having to tie them together with county channel. But we're gonna put the hospital middle school, that's the last place. So there it is. It should work flawless and better than the analog system. We're gonna add ten more cameras. So I'd say we've probably got a hundred fifty, hundred sixty cameras on both campuses that run twenty-four seven. My SROs and the tech department, uh, are over and watching and keeping them today. Of course, and the exterior doors are sixty or sixty-five of those have to be kept up with them as well. We have power warm issues. We had those, uh, fixed, uh, in the last few weeks. The, uh, we're doing test kits, you know, one of the issues we're facing, the big issues we're facing is baby. Very hard to catch because it is, it is vapor and you can't see it. We do have halos in place in all the bathrooms. So they go off, uh, admin, teacher staff, go check them automatically. Usually have to maybe one, uh, to see if they've got it on there. They do. These drug test kits, test kits, SROs can apply to the base practice and if there's any illegal substance in it, so we know right, what to do there. It's, it's the test. So we're happy to have those. Uh, moving in, so that appears for a checking system. As you know, we keep our campuses locked at all times. Nobody is allowed to come in our school while our children are there unless they are buzzing through the front door. And once they're buzzing, they get to come to the check-in system. Let's know that they're there. What, what is their reason? So we're gonna invest some of those computers way up in the future. So just talking about the tip lines, which, uh, like I said, I've said, of course, it probably saved several kids over the last fifteen, twenty years we've had it. Uh, we used to get anywhere, we make couple tips a month at least. Actors, actors do actually. We get plenty of them. There's a bunch of them. So how does it say? Yeah. And not only is it, is it kids having access to let us know to have one of their friends in anonymous, but also the way I said it is if they're on one of their school device and they're looking at self-harm content like we did with this morning, or they're looking at content to harm someone else, if like this, then we go right in. Last night we go check on the kid one by one last night. So it's, it's three minutes twenty-four seconds. So it's, it's a direct access to our school. We have several different markets. My SROs, uh, mental health and the force administrators, make sure the right kid, it's the right handle for them to add. So just letting you know about that. It's a very good resource. I hope we can keep it. Number out. The tip line is on our app, is on our web page. So they either can click on it, they can go through their phone, but they gotta can do theirs. There's a phone number on there. So, uh, and so it has, and they also can email. So there are every form of communication is on there that they can, uh, so. And like I said, it's marked about twenty-four seven. And, uh, we just really pushed this out in here with not only kids, but with the parents too. Uh, the counselors are danger, you know, we'll somebody write a given dish, write it out to keep us from knowing. So we've added everything that like, like I said, like last night, there's three minutes on the phone all quick. And then about ten minutes, we had contact with, you know, so, so it's, it's a twenty-four tip line. Click here. So we're sending it.
It's four seven nine oh seven oh two.
Uh, we're back to, I'm sorry. We have, uh, first of all, manuals for every, uh, staff. And we, of course, we show them in the sheriff's office and up here. But there's a lot of things these, we have to look forward, have our teachers look at. It's almost impossible task. It's just for them to teach what the state wants them to teach. And I think every principal will agree with me on that. They would understand all the other extra stuff we've had to add to them. The mental health, the bathing, they need food, they need closure, whatever. So we have these manuals to where if there is a physical emergency or a mental health emergency, uh, and we're fixing our event on to make it a straight, they reach down to our drawer. If it's gonna be a flip charge that we're gonna get, whatever the issue is, they get to it, be there in five, ten seconds. And that tells them step by step what to do. So we're really excited about that too, uh, to have that type of documentation and, uh, for them to do the math.
I would say that some of our information has been dated for many years and it's time now to begin, uh, updating that information so that we know how to respond in a timely manner to a situation that may be very crucial.
But sometimes the emergency takes place and what people freeze and forget what they've been trying to do. Maybe they're trying to turn this over, but it tells them step by step what to do. When you use the door, it's pull the shit out. You know, call this person. So it's, it's, I think it's very weird because take again, teachers have so much on their plate anymore. It just aren't gonna keep their flight stress. We want to hear from the user as easy as we can, but listen, keep you safe. We're only the youngest.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Prue. Somebody else raise their hand. Is it Mar?
Oh, no. They're gonna just work too good. I'm gonna knock on the door.
All right, anyone else that I missed? Cause I can't see everybody.
I'm gonna do a quick test.
Uh, no, if I wanted to get into later on, I could do it later.
Well, yeah.
Just do it later.
Just do it later. Okay. All right, Mr. Davis, Project Wild presentation.
Yeah, let me give this a cold battle. I was asked to come and share an update with, uh, a grant that I received about a year ago and just kind of tell you where the money's been spent and where our plans are for the rest of that. So I've got some pictures to share here on the screen. So, um, to remind you what, uh, what award we got, uh, I applied for, it's called the Career Award for STEM Teachers. It's funded by the Borough's Wellness Fund out of Durham. Um, and I think it's, it's actually a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for the school uh, that will be coming in over the next five years. Each year we get ten thousand dollars for teacher professional development, ten thousand dollars for classroom materials for science teachers, and ten thousand dollars, uh, extra stuff that's for me for the extra work that, that I'm putting into it. And you're doing your math, it's not a hundred and seventy-five, but at the end of it, I'll give you a twenty-five thousand dollar retention bonus. So that's, it was a big deal. There's four people awarded this, uh, across the state. And so we were super lucky to get that one. That's a five-year commitment for me. So like it or not, you're studying me the next five years. So here's what we've done so far. Um, the professional development money, um, I've used that to, to join several professional organizations, National Association of Biology Teachers, National Association of Science Teachers, uh, Wisconsin Science Teachers Association. So things that give me access to resources that, you know, I, I can't just pay and we're out of pocket every year. And so, um, we've also provided some training for the Project Wild curriculum for, um, ten science teachers. Uh, they gave us books, resources. The trader came here in June, Brian Everstall was out. We had a big workshop. It was great. We did activities. I know that some of the teachers have taken this, uh, curriculum, which is, uh, put together by the U S Division Wildlife Service. And, um, it's all about outdoor works, animals, plants, that sort of thing. And so, uh, that they, they're doing those activities in their classrooms, which is great. Uh, we funded, we had budgeted for more, but two of us went, were able to go to the Wisconsin Science Teachers Association. Uh, we're glad those things are back in person. They're so much better when they're in person. So that was great, uh, to get some, just face to face time with the teachers across the, across the state. Um, and in the future, we're, uh, so the rest of this year, uh, I'm going to Space Camp in June, which is gonna be pretty awesome. It's Space Camp for teachers. So we're gonna be able to take curriculum materials and activities back with them. And I get to like bounce around and see Roche and wears a black suit. So that's really cool. Um, and I'm planning next year to go or in November of this year to go to National Association of Biology Teachers' National Conference. We never get to go to these national conferences. This year it's in California. So this money will actually fund, that's gonna be super cool. But the most fun stuff I get to do with this money, uh, so what, where we spent some of the money, a big chunk of it this year was upgrading the platform out at the old baseball field into an actual outdoor classroom. So if you've been down there, the kids have stumps that my idea was for them to like sit on and we did lessons, but mostly they enjoyed climbing all of it and running around. And that's great. We had to buy picnic tables. We had that wall installed. So we got, uh, we had, uh, whiteboard, a locking cabinet where we can keep all the materials. So a big chunk of that money this year was, uh, you know, spent on upgrading what we have in our building. It's like a real classroom. So, uh, that is where a lot of that money's gone. But I've also been able to, uh, use that money in other, in other classes. So what I, I use this for every day is, uh, we go out there almost rain or shine, within reason, within, you know, warmer, hot or whatever. Uh, you'll see my kids wrapped up in blankets down there doing their activities, but they love to get outside. So I teach this fourth grade class we call Project Wild, and it's based on that curriculum. We got trained on back in June. We focus on the environment of North Carolina, animals and the plants in North Carolina, and the weather in North Carolina. Um, so we get to go across the, the road, the creek. Um, back in the fall, we did some activities around pumpkins. We've done scavenger hunts. We do, uh, we learn about habitats. We'll get weather. So the kids love to get outside. Um, and, and it's been really exciting to see how excited they get about that sort of stuff. So, um, that's been really fun to watch. The, the money's also provides materials for any science teacher. So grades five through twelve. So everybody has gotten something out of it. Um, you see, we, we've got a list because we don't have to pay for another outdoor classroom next year. We're gonna get to spend all that money on the, on the other teachers. I, I know that like it would be nice if I could, but I can't spend all that money in one year. So we're spreading it around as much as possible. Um, so this is funded in field trips, weather stations, books, whatever the, whatever was the classroom teachers need. And then, um, you know, going forward, we're just gonna continue professional development. I can fund any science teacher's professional development, anything that they want to do. Like pay for travel, registration fees, hotels, which is really, really nice. Cause you know, we don't have a lot of extra money for that sort of stuff. And classroom materials, like I said, that's where, you know, we can get things that can be used beyond the five years of the grant that, um, you know, that's super helpful. We can get these kids on field trips so they can get out on new signs. Uh, a big thing coming up in April will be Science Night. So we spend some money on Science Night, trying to spread, you know, the excitement of our science on, on out and around the community. We work with community members to bring them in to do these activities too. So that's where we're at. We finished, um, about one year of it. Uh, we'll get another, another round of money next month. Um, we'll just keep up the good work.
Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Side note, I did have a fourth grade girl come up wrapped up in a blanket after Project Wild. She said, Mr. Davis is nice enough, but he likes outside too much.
Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Global leader's teacher, Michelle Self and Adam Brooks. And not be bashful, Columbia.
So a little bit of background, uh, this fall, Ms. Francine Williams approached me about, uh, about doing global speakers fellowship. So, um, so I applied, was accepted to the program. And it's been good. It's been, uh, been some after-studying work and, um, you know, being on some calls, rather than basketball break to start of this winter and things like that. But it's been very good. And, uh, one of the things we had to do is we had to develop a project, um, with, uh, with this fellowship. And, and my global leader fellowship project, uh, was to plan for my biology class to, uh, to go outside and remove some of the, the predators, uh, from around the creek. Um, in biology, we learned about invasive species and how it affects ecosystems negatively. And us being able to go out and, uh, remove invasive species right along our, our creek on campus and, you know, help things up, uh, if you're making, uh, like things better out there, uh, was a great opportunity. Um, so we're planning on doing that, uh, in the coming weeks here. It's, uh, the predators actually, the leaves around them. It's a lot easier to identify. And overall, a great experience.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks. And I told him just to make sure that he can practice anytime he wants on that creek. We've got a lot.
Yeah, like Mr. Brooks, mine actually started, uh, back last summer, Ms. Knight. And Ms. Williams had asked me to attend the, uh, Gira conference and boom. So I kind of had a little bit of information about fellowship before it come around and I applied to it and got accepted. And the, the Gira, they have the, they call them sustainability development goals. And like Mr. Brooks, I chose goal fifteen, which was life on land. And what my kids, it turned into one and working on, we actually, at the academy, we have a student based business, which is called, I was a leash, that works with dog treats, making gifts and stuff. So what we decided to do with the kids, we were working on animal welfare issues, you know, things that you can connect, how your health is connected to, to animals, with the therapy dogs and different things. So with our project, what we are planning on doing is we're gonna do this to the animal shelter over in Marble. And the kids are gonna do some information and get information on the coming events, like the span or the different things. And they're gonna create a flyer and the, the information. We're hoping that this was the people that are on school's website and just get some information out there because it just really helps them with the hands-on learning and they're able just to, to brainstorm ideas and things to do. And, and in work, and we started with the goal of fifteen, which was life on land, but we could tie that into, uh, zero hunger because we depend on animals, you know, for our food and how they connect with the environment and the, the difference that our kids can make in that and the different, you know, careers that they can go into that could be on a global level, not just locally. But it, it was really good and our kids loved it. But I think Ms. Knight for asking me to speak, and Mr. Moody had asked me to speak a little bit more on our academy. Um, and we are the alternative school. And some days are really challenging. I mean, we have kids that are in attendance, troubled, maybe not for behavior, for activities. So, you know, we work and this was great. I don't even know, Ms. Knight called me and said, what do you think about school-based business? And I said, I think it's awesome. So we worked her and Mr. Moody and we got our off-ability started and our kids are able to create dog treats, give baskets, different things. And when we go and work in an event, like out in town, the festivals and stuff, the kids that come and work, we're able to pay them out of the money that we make. We've, uh, we've had so many good things this year. We, uh, with the off-the-leash and then Ms. Knight and Ms. Williams worked with Gira and we were able to purchase a glow forge machine, which is like a laser cutter, three D printer. And I actually brought, this is a keychain, to our cell phone lockbox that our kids made. And it cut it out of the glow forge. So they're learning how to design things that can be cut out. And, uh, Mr. McKenna and Brandon Moody helped us at Christmas. They made black knight ornaments. So they were able to design those and cut them out. And then, uh, Ms. Mintz with the AC department had purchased a sewing machine. So that is where I have brought our little bunnies. We have, uh, Ms. Pam Moody. She works with us part-time and she's kind of our, like our tutor. And she works with the KES, teach on how to sew and mail stuff. And we couldn't have done that without Ms. Mintz having us give the sewing machine. And then this movie herself has donated the majority of the fabric, uh, craft supplies. She buys stuff. And what we do is when we do- And what we do is when we do have a sale, what we sell, the kids typically get about ninety percent of the money. And we just put about ten percent back in for other supplies, we let them have to send the money. And we actually at Christmas, and I know a lot of you probably bought them at Christmas, the kids made, wouldn't snow them down, all different kinds of crafts. And they made over $200. So Mr. Moody had arranged for us to people to take them to mall. And they went and they shopped and they bought clothes and and then all that. And a local community member paying for their food, for their lunch. So they really liked that. And at Valentine's Day, they did a fabric Valentine basis, I think maybe you're on God one at Valentine's Day. And they made over $350 with those. And then right now we're working on the bunnies. And the kids have decided to call them bunny bunnies. So we're selling those. And we're gonna be making some baskets and and all that. Like I said, that's where Miss Moody works with them. And the way we work it, the kids do their work, their academics in the morning, and this is a reward thing for them. So they have to get their work completed before they get to do this. So it's kind of like the fun activity, but they're still learn, learn how to measure, how to cut and how to sew. And then do all that stuff. So they're really, they're really liking it. And and right, we have, I teach middle school, Joey Phillips teaches the high school. And I said, Pam Moody's with us as our tutor and our assist. And we have a pursuit academy at the morning for a while. And we just, you know, work with the kids and Mr. Moody is our curator. And the kids just really do, that really helps them, gives them something to make a little bit of everything. And I'd like to say to Miss Knight, we're gonna miss you so much. And one of the alternatives, you've been so awesome to us. And I've been, this is my eighth year with the school, I started out as an assist. And when I went back to get working, Mr. Moody was so great, support me on that. Miss Knight took time out of her busy schedule to be my mentor when I was doing my student teaching and I so appreciate it. I'm so blessed, those music's come back, that I'm a candidate. You know, you always hear that saying, it takes a village, we thought it's great village for our kids. And these kids sometimes do crawl in the house. And it's really good that people care about them, they see that in their relationship.
Mr. Nelson.
Sure.
I really appreciate the effort. I think you're doing a great job. I had, I found this student, her sense, they're small, ran into them the other day. And you have this student and I have never seen a bigger change in poise and just the, you have a good day in this office. And I just want to thank you for the things that you're doing now. That adds up like way to mention. I was so blessed and I wanted you to know about it. Thank you.
Principals, field trip requests. Do you have one there, go ahead.
Few.
Uh oh.
So the first one, Mr. Davis would like to take his physics class at the end of April to compete in the NCVOT bridge building competition, the state competition. Be April twenty-sixth and would include an overnight stay. It would be in his physics class, about thirteen kids in two to three chaprals.
And where is this?
Raleigh.
Raleigh.
They would include an overnight stay.
Okay.
And the next one, the science department would like to go to the Gatlinburg Aquarium early to mid-April to present all the development money. There's, it will be open for high school students to sign up. Our agriculture program would like to go to Sweetwater Valley Farm in Philadelphia, Tennessee at the end of March. They would get to see the industrialization of the dairy industry and how to maintain, make milk supply for make milk, collect the milk. For five hundred cows, we make robotic systems. So that would be about eighteen students going and two ZTE chaprals.
And what were the dates?
March twenty-sixth for the agriculture.
And what was the date for the Gatlinburg?
There's the first couple of weeks in April, they've not said an official date. It depends on ticket availability.
Oh, okay.
And then I have two more. Our Spanish club and two of the Spanish classes would like to go to Dollwood to participate and experience the Festival of the Nations that's going on. They would like to do that April third. And it would be a day trip out, they would depart at seven that morning and be back that evening.
And where is that?
Pigeon Forge, Tennessee. And then also our random love and history club would also like to go to the Dollwood Festival of the Nations. They would like to do that March twenty-eighth. And they would take twenty students and three chaprals.
Is that all?
I think so.
From high school, middle school and elementary, y'all have some. Let's go and get them on.
Middle school, yeah, let's go ahead and get them on.
So this is our yearly trip that we take and this is the, this will be the thirty-fifth year that these students have been on an outdoor classroom experience through Project Discovery, Talal Starchaw, Western Carolina University. They serve several of our students in trying to encourage them to continue their education after high school and get that interested. So thirty-five students will be invited, I don't know how many will actually go, it's an overnight trip. They will be going to YMCA in Blue Ridge, the Blue Ridge YMCA, which is in Black Mountain. They will leave school on April twenty-fourth and spend the night returning by the end of the day on April twenty-fifth. During that time, they'll be doing mountain biking, hiking, and some outdoor wellness activities, ropes courses. The kids always enjoy it and always snows and it's always cold. And Joey and Natalie will be going with them and driving the bus. And then Western Carolina and Project Discovery will also have four other chaprals there. And all of them have been trained in CPR at first aid, wilderness, first aid and wilderness first responders. They're all certified in that. The meals are provided by the Blue Ridge YMCA Assembly. And they also are developing a risk management plan that they that they have to do Western Carolina University. And like I said, I'm pretty sure you've already approved my fifth grade trip, but it is coming up. And so I just wanted to go to reenact it normally April third, fourth and fifth. We will leave early in the morning on April third, spend two nights in Charleston, be back on that Friday. And that's it, but up to spring break. So it's Wednesday, Thursday and Friday right before spring break. So then we get back to the chaprals, new public tour. But also we have thirty-five total travelers, eight adults and twenty-seven students. We've got some physics plans decided. This will be the third annual trip run to Charleston and everyone stays looking forward to it.
Is that all field trip requests? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the physics trip April twenty-sixth to Rock? Do I have a second?
Yes, second.
Do I, all in favor? Any opposed? Do I?
Go ahead, sorry.
Do I have a motion to approve the trip to the Gatlinburg Aquarium for the science class? Do I have a second? Second, all in favor? Any opposed? Do I have a motion to approve the trip to Philadelphia, Tennessee for the ag class, March twenty-sixth? So moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Do I have a motion to approve the Spanish club trip to Pigeon Forge on April third?
Same move.
Do I have a second? Second, all in favor? Any opposed? And March twenty-eighth, do I have a motion to approve the Beta Club and History Club? And I didn't write down where they're going.
Pigeon Forge.
Pigeon Forge. Do I have a motion to approve that? So do I have a second? All in favor? Any opposed? And for the middle school, do I have a motion to approve the outdoor trip to Western Carolina University and the YMCA in Blue Ridge and Black Mountain on April twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth?
Same move.
Do I have a second? Second, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, thank you. All right, RDA CTE partnering agreement, Ms. Knight?
Yeah, so with Mr. Matheson's absence, I told him I would take care of this. The RDA and CTE partnership agreement in the past, Robbinsville High School has been a middle of building houses for the community and partnering with the Robbinsville or the Grand County Rural Development Authority. And so we have the opportunity to do that again. They've worked quite a while getting to this point. They're starting a new development and Grand County Schools has the opportunity to build first homes on that. And this partnership agreement was in your packet. Both Attorney Davis and the attorney for the county have looked at this. It very much follows the conference we've had in the past, just the way that this works. The RDA upfront funds the housing project, the materials, all those things. At the end of the project, once the home is sold, Robbinsville High School and RDA split the profit on the house. So and then the house is put up, it will, the board will ultimately, you know, the board, the school system will average out the house and it will be for public sale. You have any questions regarding this process? Yes, please.
Do I have a motion to approve the RDA CTE partnering agreement? So moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, Mr. Harkins. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, eh, charter, well, that's it. Charter bus approval, Mr. Harkins. That's the RDA CTE.
You're looking at the old agenda. Sorry, it was on, you had a couple without revision.
I didn't know, VFW construction project needed.
Okay, so most of you know the Grand County Schools partnership with the county commissioners and Goldenly Foundation and the great organization, all collaboratively worked together to come up with a wonderful plan that was, the Goldenly Foundation has funded for an excess of, I think it's $630,000 to get a workforce development incubator business put on Main Street, which is essentially the building, which is the old VFW building. So that's why we say the VFW project. We're really looking for the perfect name for that. And once we have that, Michelle Shipman, cause of education in a cup, because that kind of is what we we want to do some some pull the onsite businesses from the school to Main Street so that we have those working relationships with what the kids learn in the school system. They can actually practice those skills in a real environment, which is more typical for what we will be preparing them for in the world. We have, this has really been on tap since right around COVID. Prices have tripled for constructions at this point. Then we did two bids, which have been posted on our website and have been posted within the the community and contractors. And we we received one bid for the total package for the project. That would include, and I will tell you, we will have our carpentry class being involved in this as they can. We will try to work hand in hand with what they're doing at home now that you've approved the RDA house. And yes, they will be working in and out of both of those as they can. But we really have got to have someone to come in, that building is gutted. So really this is from the ground up, this is electrical plumbing, HVAC, general contractor oversight. So that's what went out in the bid. And this was the information, I had it on last month's agenda, but it really came in about $40,000 higher than we we wanted. And so we went back and looked at, we really could use this instead of this. And they changed some sewer pipes. This is the contract bid quote that we got. And it's for, it goes, the contract, the only bid that we got after making a good fat paper is with WNC Contracting Incorporated. That would be Jeremy Lunchford. The total project cost for that is $388,842. And that will be my recommendation to the board that we go forward with pursuing this and getting this project started. I will say that it also, once you receive the approval, because it's our Grand County Schools project, if you choose to do that, that it also Goldenly Foundation will have to, will have to also approve it. It's already in there, but just so you know, that it's it's their money coming in the Grand County Schools. So once we, you choose whether you approve it or not, they also will will be looking at it. I'm open to questions, we worked on this for many, many years, trying to get it to this point.
Do I have a motion to approve the VFW construction bid given by WNC Contracting Incorporated with Jeremy Lunchford?
I still know.
Do I have a second? Second, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, rest of the talk, I can check. Okay, now, Mr. Harkins, charter bus approved. Anywhere you want to stand.
I'm here just for the premier transportation out of Knoxville. The everything we've seen, it looks like a good group, I mean, they're established, they've got a big fleet. I mean, they're looking at getting an eighty-one Vacher double decker bus, probably kind of true.
Mr. Mr. Harkins' position with this is, as the transportation director, he has to approve, they have to, and he has it with him. But they have to have certain amount of lobby coverage, meet certain standards. And I'm hearing you say you're professional media, they do. And you should like that that would be fine, charter bus for our.
Now I have to come through and expect it before it leaves myself too, because I have to check this, I have to go over. Check tires, lives, driver credentials, all that. So we, we don't check and make sure that they're standing on those boats.
There's no low bearing bridge.
Do I have a motion to approve this charter bus approval?
Same move.
Do I have a second? Second, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, thank you, Mr. Harkins, appreciate that. All right, fiscal year twenty-four audit contract, Mr. Green?
As y'all know, for the last several years, we have contracted from Anderson, Spith and White, former yearly fiscal audit. I have a contract in hand. We really have enjoyed working with this folks, we're very professional. Very timely, they're here for two and a half days in the spring and two and a half days in August. Um, and we receive quality audits with these folks. Uh, in fact, they, they have offices all over the state, but, uh, at this point in time now, their firm, uh, forms over eighty, uh, audits for eighty, uh, districts within the state. So that's their, that's their specialty and they're good. They've helped us a lot with, uh, helping us to maximize our funds, make some decisions to save us some funds. So, um, um, they've been really, really good to work with. But it's my recommendation that we, uh, contract with them again to, uh, perform our fiscal year twenty-four audit and have a collective contract here. And we simply need a signature today from myself and the chairperson. So this is an action.
Do I have a motion to approve the fiscal year twenty-four audit contract? I can't remember the names.
Anderson Smith and White.
Anderson Smith and White.
So.
Do I have a say?
Say.
All in favor? Any opposed? All right, Mr. Green, you're still on budget amendments.
Um, before the meeting, I did give you a packet there of four, uh, pages to the budget amendments. And the first section, the first page there leads to budget amendments for state public school fund. And the first, uh, budget amendment there will, uh, require a little bit of more detail. This is a budget of the PRC thirteen and fourteen. These are two, uh, pots of, uh, funding for the career and technical education program. Um, and we make this, uh, transfer each year based on the formula, um, the months of employment that we receive for teacher salaries. Um, we historically have, uh, wound up with approximately six to seven months employment that's not needed to pay all our teachers. So early, uh, in calendar year, we'll make an ABC transfer. So those, uh, funds are available, be transferred out of months of employment and into, uh, the same or another, uh, CTE program, PRC fourteen. And those funds, once they're in the PRC fourteen, they're locked on flexibility. So those months of employment that we have transferred out of PRC thirteen and into PRC fourteen is fifty-four thousand, five hundred and twenty-nine dollars. We plan to use that for supplies and materials. Any questions about that specific, uh, budget amendment? Okay, next section down, uh, Ms. Murray spoke about this, uh, particular grant earlier. This is a school safety grant, uh, that was for three hundred thousand dollars. Uh, but the legislature and Department of Public Construction, uh, decided to allot eighty-five percent of that in this fiscal year. So the amount of that grant that we received is two hundred and fifty-five thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars. We plan to use that for, uh, contract services for six thousand, three hundred and fifteen dollars. And majority of that is for equipment, two hundred and thirty-nine thousand, five hundred and fifteen dollars.
Okay, what are they gonna do with the other, uh, forty-three?
That will be allocated next year, the fifteen percent we were receiving in fiscal year twenty-five.
Okay.
Good question, thank you. Uh, next section down, this is PRC forty-six, third grade bonus. Uh, those bonuses have already been paid, but the allot there is eight thousand and thirty-eight dollars. If you'll notice on that first line that these bonuses, they're in the description, if you'll see the last three letters, NSR, these bonuses are not subject to retirement. Basically, individual when they receive these bonuses, it says NSR on the end, don't get credit for that, you know, for their retirement.
So just for public awareness, those bonuses are bonuses set up by the Department of Public Construction that are earned by teachers for being in the top percentage of test scores in the states. We had three teachers.
Um, well, the third grade is just for third grade.
That's right. Well, that's not so, yeah.
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 So we've had, um, Randy Carpenter, she was in the top percentage locally and the top twenty-five percent in the state. And Jessica Ayers also got the bonus for being in the top percentage locally, right? Is my understanding?
Okay, thank you.
Any questions about that? Okay, for budget. Okay, next section down, this is PRC forty-eight, this is principal and other teacher bonuses. Uh, the amount there is fourteen thousand, nine hundred and ten dollars. Uh, so the bonuses have been gone to classroom teachers, uh, for regular classroom, CTE, AIG, uh, there are a couple of technical bonuses actually. Any questions about the first budget? Next one?
Just one second, I backed up there at the school safety grant, PRC forty.
Yes.
Do I have a little, because I, I see it as PRC.
Department of Public Construction decided to give this particular grant a new PRC.
Then you're sure. Well, no, I was just wondering because I thought, I didn't know they ever decided to give it a new code, so.
Couldn't catch. Okay, the next page, uh, this is budget amendment for the federal fund. This is for PRC seventeen, this is also the CTE program. We received additional eighteen hundred dollars and plan to use that for supplies. Next page, please. This is also budget amendment, uh, in the federal fund. This is for PRC one-ten, this is Twenty-Third Century After School Grant. As you know, that grant has a possibility of us receiving four hundred thousand dollars. That, uh, grant is, those funds are giving us, uh, in three installments. We've already received the first two installments. So those two installments, uh, plus, uh, approximately eight thousand dollars of carryover from last year is two hundred and eighty thousand, two hundred and fourteen dollars and thirty-six cents. Now, majority of these funds are used for the actual director, coordinators and tutors. Uh, we also have a parent involved, liaison, uh, contracted services, uh, where we reimburse, uh, Stiglau Valley Center for their services over there, um, with their after-school program. Any questions about that?
That grant is that for renewal? This is the last year of that grant. And then as a district, we will be applying for that grant again. And typically, there's two, two cycles of your own, a cycle then later that you're, but don't get the grant and then you can jump back on. We're not sure how that's gonna work. Uh, there'll be, I have the technical assistance webinar, I believe, tomorrow with the, um, grant coordinator and the stadium. And we will ask those questions at that time.
No questions about that, kick the budget amendment. The last page, this is, um, a budget amendment to fund eight borough income or grants that were awarded. This, uh, budget amendment is for PRC three-thirteen, this is Giro. Those funds flow through Appalachian State, New Marston. If you're living in a crowded home there, the amount that we were awarded for this fiscal year is a hundred and thirty-two thousand, four hundred and eighty-five dollars and ninety-three cents. And majority of those, uh, budget expenditures for the Giro coordinator, um, got some two teachers, tutors, uh, staff development, uh, student program, which is field trips. Uh, this particular grant, uh, follows a federal grant year. So these funds, uh, were awarded to us so that we can start spending those on October first, twenty-twenty-three, and we can use these funds until September third of this year.
Do I have a motion to approve the budget amendments as presented by Mr. Green?
I still move.
Do I have a say?
I'll say.
All in favor? Any opposed?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Skip.
No, I can start that.
Oh, okay. All right, Ms. Knight, surveys.
There were some surveys in your packet, um, when, when your board packet went out. Um, none of those really, you asked for surveys that would have any kind of information that would be, uh, potentially offensive. Um, if you've got time to review those surveys, uh, uh, just be interested in your, if there are any comments, if not, the Imagine Grand County is one that is gonna work in conjunction with the, the counties, they're looking at a visioning process, brainstorming process for the, uh, health center. And they were interested in getting the, uh, the children's opinions about what they would like to see to participate in. So that's really where that came from. Uh, the others are CTE surveys, so. So just, they really, I don't know if that's an action on, because none of them really are, um, outside of the, just, that's just the information.
Mr. White, facilities update.
I'll turn.
Your turn.
I'll back up and, uh, give you a quick, uh, testing update, uh, just, I know a lot of once times, public doesn't necessarily understand, but if it's not in GOC time, then there's not testing going on. There's testing going on all the time. Uh, you know, I know that Miss Sauer, like I mentioned, you know, we're, uh, just finished up the ACT, ACT part. Also, all three schools are prospecting in champions, uh, which I've mentioned to you guys several times in the past, uh, basically just give a, a good measure of where the students are at the current time, a good picture, and how teachers can address, uh, any gaps that students may have. Um, of course, we're, I mentioned to you last month that we are currently in the access for AL's window. That's the, the yearly testing that we do for our students that, uh, that maybe English is a second language to them. And, uh, we're just, really just finishing that up. I wanted to give out a, a, a shout out to Tamara Schreiber. Uh, she is our EL teacher and she, she works with students. She, she's got, I think we're up to about twenty-three, twenty-four students now. And, uh, she works with students from kindergarten to twelfth grade. And, uh, you know, you, you might have students that, that at home they speak Spanish, you might have some that speak Chinese, you might, we've even told them before, that at home they speak Cherokee. So she has got a, 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 uh, she does a tremendous job. She really does, I just want to brag on her for a minute, so. And then of course, you know, we're, I know Miss Hooper, uh, I believe was the one that, that spoke about parents with the EOGs, and that's what we're currently doing on the testing side as well, to try to make sure that all the combinations are gonna flow through correctly, every kids are, are, are grouped together correctly and all that type of stuff. So it's always a busy time with testing, so. All right, now, facilities, right? Okay, all right, so first, first, facilities, uh, two other things I wanted to discuss with you for just a moment. Uh, I believe at the last, uh, meeting, maybe two meetings ago, I let you guys know that we did, uh, submit an application for a grant for the needs basic public school capital fund for, and in that grant, we were basically recruiting a middle school. Um, what we did receive for, we did not receive a new award for that. So all I was saying is. What do I mean? Uh, so with that said, uh, move on. The next thing I wanted to mention to you is probably occurred, uh, last Monday, the twenty-sixth, we had dismissed schoolers. And the reason for that was there was something, and I don't necessarily understand what was going on with water lines, but, uh, there was something going on with the tank switching water tanks or, or something to that effect. And it caused the, the water lines to run at a higher pressure. And so from what I'm thinking, Patrick, uh, Nichols told me that we were running somewhere like over a hundred and fifty PSI or something like that. And basically what that caused is with that higher pressure, we had water heaters busted, we had water pumps busted, uh, busted, and we had, uh, several different water lines that burst, uh, and all that type of stuff. And of course, with the difference in the pressure, the toilets wouldn't flush and things like that.
It wouldn't run at lunchtime?
Yeah, so it was, it was interesting, so. But I did want to make sure everybody a shout out to our maintenance group because, uh, they worked very hard that evening to make sure that we can have school the next day because we had an ACT at the high school and really didn't have school. Didn't school, but I did, I didn't, I think I mentioned last time, if you want something to happen, something to go wrong, or you want it to snow, I can do a schedule ACT. Because it normally snows, but this time it was waterline busted. But anyway, uh, I wanted to shout out maintenance group because they did an excellent, uh, work, worked extremely hard to make sure that happened. So I wanted to make sure that our maintenance group was right on. Uh, we are also in the process of getting ready to start making our summer maintenance list. Uh, you know, it's something we do every year. We get our, uh, teachers and the principals to, uh, get lists to us, to, so the maintenance department work, uh, you know, things that they might need to do over summer maintenance and things, so we're working on that at this time, uh, to get that, again, I can't brag on our maintenance crew, while they're able to afford, so. Very grateful. And then, uh, we got a little bit discussed with the stadium, but I believe that's the next agenda.
Go ahead.
All right. So with the stadium, um, basically, as you guys remember, uh, last month, I mentioned to you that, uh, we will have temporary bleachers again for the upcoming football season. And, uh, so what Jason bring up, and what I have done is we have put out a request for bids for temporary bleachers, uh, that went out on February the twentieth. I'm sorry, that went out and they were due on February the twentieth. Well, uh, through that request for bids, we had one coming in. And so, uh, so what we decided that we needed to do was to re-advertise that, give it some more time. And so, uh, that time period after the, the second, uh, request for bids went out, that timeframe was, uh, yesterday. And so as of yesterday, we still had the one bid. So we have one bid, and that was from Southeastern City. We opened the bid yesterday. And, uh, so basically, this is kind of the way that the bids were, we asked them to, to put in a bid. One was for, uh, just the football season, the bleachers coming in August second, stadium here through December the ninth. And then we asked them to give us a separate quote for the bleachers to be installed early to where we can have graduation at the football field. And so if that's, that, that situation, the bleachers can be installed May the twentieth, and they would stay, uh, onsite until December the ninth. Uh, the bid that we opened yesterday, and I wanted to, uh, we'll give you guys the numbers here, and this is something that, uh, uh, we, we need to act on. And, uh, we need to get this, uh, make a decision here and then get it on to the county commissioners where they can do what they need to do and where we can get these bleachers, uh, get these things watering and rolling. So, uh, the first, the first bid from Southeastern bidding was, again, this is for the football season. All right. Bleachers being installed August second, staying through the football season. And the, the price for that was seventy-one thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars.
Which was almost exactly what it was last year.
Very similar.
Very similar.
And then the second, where we asked, you know, we're bringing the bleachers early, uh, the bleachers coming in May the twentieth, staying through the football season. The quote price that we had, when we got from Southeastern City was ninety-three thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars. And so I guess at this time, I am, I've presented you the bid that we have. I guess recommend that we make a decision as to which one of these two we, we want to go with, and where we can get this information off to Jason Brown, which will share the, the word commissioners.
They're paying for it.
I'm sorry?
They're paying for it.
Uh, that now. All right, this is, this is something I've been trying to prepare for. Uh, from my understanding, if you're honest or remember, when we had our joint meeting with board of commissioners, um, the decision was made that the funding for the stadium, uh, you know, for the design phase anyway, uh, was gonna be coming from our sales tax revenues. And so it's my understanding that it will probably continue that way until we have another joint meeting. So with that said, you know.
So, so yes, it would be coming through county commissioners via the funds that are designated to the schools anyway through sales tax revenues.
So with the sales tax revenue, how much do we know that that's gonna be? I mean, do we know that we have it at three thousand? Because that's not good as a graduation, for graduation.
At the last joint meeting that we had with the county commissioners, uh, someone had asked Stacy Carpenter, and she was on, uh, she was attending that remotely.
Yes.
She estimated that our sales tax revenue would be, uh, filtered or should be filtered, uh, by statute, uh, to the school system with approximately five hundred thousand dollars.
Oh.
Uh, as you know, in, in previous years, that sales tax revenue that was dedicated or statutory is supposed to come to the school system. We use that for our school bond and also our tuition payments. So now those two debts have been satisfied, uh, and that is, but again, was five hundred thousand dollars. So now those two debts have been satisfied, uh, and that is, but again, was five hundred thousand dollars.
So you're saying the rest of the money will be done.
That's the commissioners. We need a joint meeting to decide.
So we don't have any building projects going on or anything, but well.
The stadium?
Stadium, sorry.
So we need to vote on one or the other?
Or, uh?
I, I, I think the timeline you're at, this is probably the latest you can make a decision. We can choose to get in here for graduation.
If the money's available since like this, we need to have graduation down here where it's uncrated and everybody can attend. Though it's higher, but I think it's, well, I think it's personally worth it to.
I really like it down there.
Yeah.
Of course, it's raining.
So that's a twenty-two thousand, five hundred dollar difference, but it's my recommendation. The kids prefer to have it, doesn't it? Sorry?
Sorry.
For last year.
I would think the majority would, yes. There's a lot more room for them to have to see their family members as they would like to attend. It's not as crowded there, there are hours and hours before trying to get a space. It's just.
Yeah, it's hot, too. Yeah, it's very much fun, I was there, yeah.
Cool. The kids really enjoy it.
I'm agreeing.
All right, do I have a motion to approve the, uh, amount of ninety-three thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars, uh, on the, uh, stadium bleacher agreement? So, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Go forward.
Next agenda?
Go ahead.
All right, uh, now we'll switch back to the, uh, so now, knowing Mr. Caringer was, uh, in my position doing testing, you know, years, years ago, you know, we, we could, uh. But, uh, anyway, I love that. Quench the contract. All was pretty quick. But, uh, now I remember when I was teaching the, in, in, you know, the Alabama tunes and things, you know, we, we would give our test and then we had an auction where we could like retest kids. And, uh, and now that auction, there's no policy in state, in, in, in the state, uh, legislation that allows that anymore. And so we need to go, if we're going to give our students the opportunity to show that they're proficient on the test and for a second time, we have to go through this process. And that's what I'm reading to you now. All right, so this is called the summer program plan. And so there's three ways that students can participate in the summer program plan. Uh, one is the first one, in which is what we do typically at the elementary school and the middle school, is this is available to students who have passed the course or the subject, but just didn't, but they did not score proficient on the exam and would lack another opportunity to show that they are efficient. And so that's one of the, the, the things that we can, or one of the ways we could use this program. Another one is, uh, through what, I'm sure most of you've heard of it, it's called credit recovery. And that's with, uh, with P O C, the high school subjects. And so this, uh, credit recovery, uh, courses only provide a subset of the North Carolina standard course of studying for, uh, for the original course and then they can retest. And so there's several requirements that D P I, uh, has put in place. Uh, first of all, is the remediation and the re-administrations of the E O Gs and the E O Cs must occur after the conclusion of a student academic year. So it has to happen after the kids, uh, the, the year for the kids is, uh, they went home, so. But it can occur on teacher workdays, okay? And so another thing that is that, uh, we have to have a, a written plan, uh, that has been approved by board. That's why we're talking about this today. Another requirement from D P I is that all administrations, uh, in the summer program, uh, be, uh, be done online. Students have to take this online. The test that will be available, uh, essentially is all subjects, E O G, E O C, with the exception of third grade reading. Our third grade reading, that's, uh, that's a song, separate, uh, general statute with re-achieved legislation. And so that, they, uh, students will test at the end of the, the free to achieve, like, uh, summer games. So without, so this program that I'm talking about here will be basically for third grade math, fourth through eighth grade math reading, uh, the fifth and eighth grade science, as well as math one, math three, English two, and biology at the high school. Uh, now, this plan that we, uh, discussed in our leadership team meeting, uh, a few weeks ago, is very similar to the plan that we, uh, that you guys approved, uh, last, last year. Uh, what we've decided to do is, uh, to use those teacher workdays, uh, at the end for remediation. And so basically, uh, the last day for our students is May the third. All right, so now remember, the remediation and the retesting has to happen after that date. All right, so, so May thirtieth, uh, will be the last day for the students. So we will start with the remediation on May thirty-first, the very next day, which is a Friday. So we'll start our, our, our remediation. Um, we're going to only require for the elementary school and the middle school, we're going to require they come to remediation, and as long as they come to remediation, one day they can retest. Okay, and so what we're going to do is we're going to say, uh, one, one day of remediation for four hours, and then they can start retesting. So the first day that we can retest will be the following Monday, which will be, uh, Ju- June the third. And so, uh, so again, remediation will start on Friday the thirty-first. The students that come in for remediation on May thirty-first, they will be able to come back on Monday, uh, June the third and, and, and re- retake the test, okay? Now, uh, so again, if a student was not able to come in on Friday, but they are able to come in on Monday and do remediation, then they'll be able to test on Tuesday. So there's the remediation one day and retesting in the days prior to that. Uh, so those, those dates would last through June the sixth, which is our last, uh, workday. And so we hope to have all of the elementary and middle school remediation and retesting completed by that day, uh, June this, uh, June sixth. Now, for the, at the high school, hey, you know, if you're going to do a credit recovery, now this is again for students that, uh, still have yet to pass the course and might need a little more, uh, remediation. And so what we're going to do with the high school is they're going to do eight days of instruction for six hours a day, which is a total of forty-eight hours. And those dates would start on June the tenth and go through June the nineteenth. And then, so that's, that's your eight days. And then on June the twentieth and twenty-first is when we will do the retesting. And so that is the plan. And, uh, so I do, if we're going to be able to do this retesting, I have to have this submitted to, uh, D P I, uh, by, by April first. That's why I needed to have it in this meeting, so. So if you guys approve this, I will need our chair to give me a signature. So.
I'll sign this.
You approve it. Well, I'll, but in your hands unless you're going to question it about it, it's something I didn't describe earlier.
Do I have a motion to approve the summer retesting program as presented by Mr. White?
I still have.
Do I have a second? So, all in favor? Any opposed? Thank you, Mr. White.
Thank you.
Good job.
School resource officers, sheriff's department.
Mr. Nelson, Sheriff Nelson, uh, can I ask how much time we've been giving them?
There's no, ma'am.
Typically, you know, we said five, ten minutes, but I'm sure where they may, for example, listen.
Okay. Because we did this about, uh, we did this about the.
Good morning.
Hello, all be good now to turn the route.
Uh, so, uh, first, that was a dot mobile I am. I'm sheriff of Grant County. I got elected in twenty twenty-two. Um, Tony George used to be the school resource officer at the time, just before I came into the office. Um, Cody was there four years before accepting, uh, the job as chief deputy under my office. Uh, so Cody's very aware of what goes on in schools, he is George Paul Street. Uh, Travis Brooks is back in the back. Uh, Travis is captain over investigations, uh, and training. Travis is basically in charge of the training from a video schools and through lack of shooting training with the different banks. Um, when I came into the office, uh, one of the things I wanted to do is increase the presence of the deputies in the schools. And I think everybody could saw that. Um, we have participated in training, uh, active shooting training. And Travis has been in charge of that. Uh, and he continues to train with, uh, the deputies on average at least once a month. So I just wanted to throw that out there. Um, last night, there was some misconceptions that got thrown out on Facebook, uh, in the community. Um, we are not asking for any money from the county. Um, if it is transferred to us under our jurisdiction, the school board and, and the funds will still come from those places within the school board and, and those grants or whatever they pay. Then, I, I've been talking to P C zero six nine, this is where.
P R C sixty-nine.
So, yes, that's currently where it comes from. Yes, but there's different pots of money that it comes from, but it's currently coming from that pot of money. So thi- this is for these two positions, we're not last accounting for any more money or any more money. There've been some discussions about, uh, changing of the S R Os that's currently back. We're not looking to change every S R O's. Uh, they're there, they want to be there. Um, but it, it comes over, and we've got people that we can put in those positions. And I'll give you an example. When Cody left the school, uh, it was Jeff Booth that was on with us. Um, sometime after that, Jeff Booth left. Uh, we put deputies in school to make up for that difference. Um, I think Jeff, he didn't have a certification at the time, and he worked under the office staff under my certification until he got it. So there's a working relationship there. Um. When I ran for office, uh, I talked about trying to get a third S R O. S R Os were not near my office right then. So I don't see how I could have a third one there if it's not under the law. And I'm not going to say we're going to find them for that. But it will be actively searched for that funding if, if it's underneath the office. Um, Mr. Nelson, you, you made a comment earlier that if it's not broke, why aren't we looking to fix it? Um, currently under the jurisdiction and way, way they can operate, if it's not broken, that, but we can build on that. Uh, if it's under the sheriff's office, uh, we've got, they would have jurisdiction all over the county, not just on school grants. Uh, if there's an incident that happens on the school bus and, uh, and S R O led it to go to that school bus or they have no jurisdiction back. Um, if they, if the school bus was brought back to the county for, uh, something that happened out in the county, they, they could not do any legal action back. And that's just one example. Um, so, so really, it's, it's not broke the way it is, but it could be built on, it's a lot better and, and for ways to build on. Uh, give you another example, uh, and we're not casting stones or anything like that. We're just making things, uh, public, um, for the jurisdiction parts of it. Last week, we had a, a student that was researching on a county computer how to make a law and to, uh, about school shoot, school shootings. This, this happened, um, they found out about it to, to, you know, something like an eighteen. Okay. Um, we did not know about it, the sheriff's office did not know about it until the next day. Uh, we would call in, uh, to handle the situation. Uh, at the time, I think the only thing that could be done was expelled. Is that correct?
That's not our jurisdiction, is it?
Right.
Yeah.
Right, so that's what I'm saying, the jurisdictions, we, we came in as the sheriff's office and handled the situation. Um, Cody's got a presentation that he's going to talk about the jurisdictions, his own thought, so, but. It, it's up to the boards to vote for this. Um. I'm good either way with what decision they make, but I feel like it's better for the county, for the kids, that we can do more under the sheriff's office. Um. But Cody will give you his presentation of, uh, good, thank y'all.
I'm sheriff, so I'm Chief David George, uh, again, on Florida, two thousand and eight, Sheriff's Office. Worked for sheriff's office for seven years, went to American Schools, the S R O for four years. Then came back to sheriff's office of Sheriff Paul. I hold a master law enforcement certification through local and general justice standards training and one on sheriff's badge. So speaking about the office of the sheriff, the sheriff's the chief law enforcement officer of the county. He has jurisdiction throughout the entire county. The Grand County Sheriff's Office is the primary law enforcement agency in Grand County. And we currently have twenty-two more deputies and fifteen more detention officers. So what is a school resource officer? My definition is to find the city's law enforcement officer assigned to one or other schools within a local school management unit who works in the school at least twenty hours per week for more than twelve weeks per calendar year to assist with all the follow-up. School safety, school security, emergency preparedness, emergency response, and any additional responsibility related to school safety or security. So touching on emergency preparedness, at the sheriff's office, we have a preliminary step process. I have the entire preliminary step plan, four plans, everything we need to get some preliminary step. I've asked for it to be updated. Checked yesterday, parts of it has been. I still don't have four plans of the middle school plan, and my elementary four plan still has sixth grade on its scanners. The bus routes, it's twenty twenty-two bus routes, were I ended off of myself. When I put them in, I was actually in that position. Couple of facts, only four counties in North Carolina utilize company police for S R Os, being Graham, Cherokee, Moore, and Mamamora. The other nine, six counties utilize sheriff's office or local municipality departments for S R Os. As sheriff's vote, about company police, I worked it for four years, I was chief there for three years. I'm all about jurisdiction, the instant ounce jurisdiction. I know the instant ounce company place, I know the instant ounce sheriff's office. In y'all's pamphlet is the Northern General Statute of seventy-four E, which touches on everything that do the company police. As stated in Northern General Statute seventy-four E, company police has jurisdiction limited to the property the company that employs them. They don't have authority offsite or in public areas surrounded by the company's premises. Now, the proper speaking about the tideline, it's a great thing. Tideline is absolutely great, but some companies at nine o'clock at night, and the students say done this, done that. But the way it's set up now, and it's our open jurisdiction to do an investigation, also grounds. So therefore, it would count with the sheriff's officer investigation. Uh, Northern administrative code is also in pamphlet, which has the prohibited acts. I'm not going to overread one of them. Um, a couple of main ones, company police cannot operate with license sirens in our school or off a company property. So let's say for instance, you're at the high school campus, you have an emergency on elementary campus. By statute, administrative code, you're not allowed to run and put license sirens into this campus. Once you cross the bridge, you gotta turn on your license sirens and proceed on as a civilian until you get back on company road. So I get on license sirens, uh, other issues, company police. Again, not pointing fingers at this company police, they have to see by no means, and this, this is proven fact. Potential for complex mantras, training and accountability, legal limitations, uh, again, jurisdiction is key, public perception, oversight and regulation. The kind of touch on company police fees, I think it's three hundred dollars every year, well, still it's the same fees to keep the company police agents going on cross the renewals. Also. Also, the most important part of this, this was to take place, is a good memorandum of understanding. The M O U is what serves standard operating procedures among Grand County Sheriff's Office and Grand County Schools. A few key points of the M O U would be supervision, daily assignments, change of command, duty hours and leave time, training and briefings, selection procedures of SROs, we want the schools in for them. Use and responsibilities, enforcement arrest procedures, interview procedures, search and seizure procedures, and school rules violations such as this. All these would need to be addressed in the M O U if that's the route of us to go. Um, I want to throw it out there, it was gonna go that way, SROs will only be assigned to Grand County Schools. They will not be responsible for answering calls or service during the school day. We have three patrol officers on any given day responsible for call or service. That's up to the prohibition. Um, if an S R O is not available, we'll do every attempt we can to try to place one of our patrol guys, at least in the school for part of the day. We're here to work with the schools, that's school saying is key to me, I was in S R O for four years, I know the incident analysis of the school, and we'll do everything we can to work with the school. And going back to the incident last week, I'm gonna speak as a parent. When I come in and find this out on whatever morning it was, and I can't find out if that kid's on campus or not, after researching those things the day before, it kind of bothers me as a parent, so I had two girls be around campus myself. Um, I think we should have known if he was on campus that morning or not, but the jurisdiction of that incident last week would actually follow through Grand County Schools. Company police because he was researching from the academy. Any law enforcement referrals was made by myself, first. I've done two referrals to the S P I, alone as you not, or confused. And I'm not here to make it personal. If there are any questions.
What, what is this prohibited act, is number Carolina?
That's the administrative code, so that's the prohibited acts that relates to company police. Yeah.
So what you're proposing to do is you want to take over the, the armed officers in this school?
Sheriff's Office.
Yeah, Sheriff's Office. And you're saying that some, an incident happened with a bomb and you guys weren't notified? I mean, I want to make sure I understand what you mean.
Next, next time.
You were not, you were not notified immediately?
Same, we need, we can clear that up, because we did our own investigation and the kids were expelled, okay? Until we further do a further investigation on what actually happened, is that we did see that these rules, the laws were broken. We invited the sheriff's office, and at that point, the kids were no longer on campus, is that not correct? So to take care of this, there are stages we go through, because again, we do have jurisdiction on our school grounds, but not ours. All right, we, we argue about that stuff all they want, but I want to make it clear, I want to make it clear.
I, I was not, I personally asked that morning, that student was on campus, I don't know if anything was or not.
Did you ask?
Uh, yeah, it's all about.
Yes, so see, we see it all.
So, one was.
But is your point you're trying to make to us is, if you're the sheriff, if the sheriff's department is over all of this, then everybody home is gonna know what's going on at this school?
Oh, there's a streamlined communications, yes. That, that, that doesn't mean the benefits will be streamlined communications, but when S R O is the sheriff's office.
I care about that very much.
Um, streamlined training, coordinating training with, with everybody involved. There, there are no report system here, so we don't know what's reported to the SROs, and there's, there's no reporting software for this agency. Um, mark patrol cars, we'll guarantee mark patrol cars out in other schools.
That's what I was told today. Before I ever got here, they did, that's, that's a good thing, I think that is. But boy, you got, I made my stomach hurt.
You know, Cameron Nelson, may I speak, please?
Sure.
Um, Ms. Knapp, let me say, thank you for your service. I was a teacher under you, I was a teacher under a lot of, of students. And I know this doesn't have anything to do with this, and I was a board member with you for a while. But with, with it being under the school system, with it, with it being under the school system, and you saw when it was only four counties, the rest of the counties, it's under the, it's under the sheriff's department. Obviously, that sounds like pretty good business to me, because we have jurisdiction. Now, because it's under the school system, by law, you are the agent in charge of the SOO officers. Uh, now, right now, do we have an M O U with the sheriff's department?
I'd like to ask, I don't know.
Okay, an M O U, a memorandum of understanding is very important. And I can tell you, this right here is the safety action plan for safe schools twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-six, is full of law enforcement and memorandums of understanding with the school system. And that is very important. I can tell you, these counties that are not under the school sys, that are under the school system, they have M, M, M O U's. Now, Moore County has, I researched this because, because I've had, I've asked, I had asked back in November for SOO officers and nurses, but um, they have a mutual agreement, they do. In Wood County, they have a chief SOO officer in the central office, in the central office, but now it is under the schools, but they still have an agreement. And they can, and jurisdiction is a huge thing, it's huge. And if we do not have an M O U with the sheriff's department, it is, in my opinion, it puts our students at risk. It puts our students at risk, and it's irresponsible, personally. Um, since I have been on the board, there have been four SOO officers that have rotated through this school, and I heard, I don't have Facebook, but my ninety-six-year-old mother does, and she was informing me last night of what was going on and all the negativity, and guys, we, as adults, they were adults, we teach our children, don't go on that social media and, and listen to us, so don't do it. But let me tell you what, because I have talked to sixteen now sheriff's departments, um, just because I was interested in knowing this, um, um, in the summertime, our children are not, our children are more vulnerable when they leave campus, that is when they're the most vulnerable. Most, a lot of these sheriff's departments, you know what they're doing with their SOO officers in the summertime? They are, they are work, the SOO officers are working with high-risk youth. And that is our, uh, P R C oh sixty-nine, that is at-risk youth, and that is where the money for the, for the resource officers come out of. And it can be contractualized, because we contractualize, and that is, that is a contractual agreement that we can make, it comes under the three eleven, and it is an object code. Uh, we can track, we can contractualize all the time services out. And I think, I think the money would be, the state money would be better utilized and a possibility even a third SOO officer. If it's, if it's under the jurisdiction and there is a school, uh, that does the P R C oh thirty-nine school safety grant program, they have gotten it for six years, and all six years that they have gotten it, their county is, their county SOO officers are under the jurisdiction of the sheriff's department. The commissioners or the, the county sends them an invoice for that grant money. And they, the school sends them that grant money for those SOO officers. Now, we have had four SOO officers, we have one that left, uh, thought, thought retired, but didn't retire. We have actually had three that have left and gone to work for the sheriff's department. So folks, I mean, you know, uh, is, is it such a bad thing? But, and, and, and an SOO officer that has come back to us. And I think when, if we contractualize the money that, we are at the same money that we have now, which we can do that under the three eleven object code. Um, uh, Officer George, are you saying there's a possibility, uh, of a third SOO officer?
There is possibility, I can state the sheriff, but that's something that we can look at grants and funding and go to the commissioners.
But you can't do grants unless what?
Well, you can do grants, but the jurisdiction of the SROs is currently there, and then if I had one, it would be under me.
So you could write grants and you had the jurisdiction of the SOO officers?
It would work better if all was under one operator, because it was.
Sounds to me like it would really be nice if we had this safety grant, but, but, but we did get it this year, but it's got a new code.
Well, it's a different grant, but we're talking about the same thing.
I know, but can we not apply for this next year, this school safety grant, oh thirty-nine?
Yes.
And I mean, if you can free up some of that at-risk money, the oh thirty-nine, uh, that's wonderful, because that can be used for some other stuff, before you had some grant money.
But it's sort of like in the big.
It's not, it's not an excuse, it's not a matter of freedom, that, you can't supply it for that, I don't know if you understand what supply means, but you can't take that to pay for things that you're already paying for.
No, no, that's true, but I mean, like in this county, in this county, because the, uh, the money comes in from the state through P R C, P R C oh sixty-nine for nurses and school resource officers, comes in from that, from that.
That's good.
And if we can contractualize that money out for the school resource officers, I think it will be better managed based on the fact that, uh, we're not able to be on the agenda for budget for nurses and SOO officers until next month. But I think the money would be better, uh, managed, uh, I think there would be better managed. Personally, I think we need to put this sewing discord behind us between the schools and the sheriff's department, which I think has happened. We need to be professional for our children. We need to work collectively, which we have not done because of this sewing discord that we have. And it will definitely put our staff and our children's safety first. Now, have we had a, have we had a, we've had a, an incident, have we had a training this year?
If you're talking about active shooting training, uh, we had one last year, right after I came into the office.
Did we have one this year?
And we had one this school's, school session year also.
Where did you have?
Uh, we did it at the elementary school this year.
The SOO officers, our SOO officers participated?
Uh, they observed us doing our training in thirded schools without.
Okay, did you have one at the high school?
We did, that's, that happened in twenty, early twenty-three.
It didn't happen this year?
Uh, not at the high school this year, no.
Okay, and that's something they encourage on the state level, right?
Uh, state level, I believe Robert says that we have to have one a year.
Yes.
And we talked about doing two, but it just never has.
Yeah, I think maybe one time your schedule was busy, but they've always come down to help. As far as SROs involved, there's actually school dis, they'll be on same dealing with that. The whole package of the training, the aim was to come in on the wrong, the cost that could be, navigate the halls, find the threat, and move. So that's, that was reason why.
Uh, that's true, okay, and Mr. Booty, you are our safety guy extraordinary. Let me tell.
I'm just a director.
No, you are the safety guy extraordinary. But it is my understanding, you have not officially announced your retirement, but it's my understanding that you're going out this year. So it, you know, it, that's devastating because you've been so active in keeping our school safe. I mean, you have done an extraordinary job, personally. And, and, and you've worn a lot of hats, you've worn a lot of hats, you've been asked to do a lot of things. Um, is there any other discussion? Because at this point, uh, we need, because we don't have an M O U, and I'm, every county that I've talked to, yes, you definitely have an M O U.
Uh, I, I like such things.
Well, I think you're on the agenda.
Uh, Paul, sorry.
I think you're on the agenda next.
This has been my life for eleven years, providing the, keeping kids safe mentally, physically, spiritually, whatever, I don't have a personal run against sheriff's office. About this discord is not with me, I'm always getting my doors open, they, they know that. And I, I, we, uh, I assure myself like this, I wish we could have done something while he was here, and that's not getting placed at you, because I value friendship, and I value our time, we have good time, and we can do a good job keeping kids safe. And I, as you say, I'm not perfect, and I don't, I'm not trying to be prideful, I, I'll stand on the record, but we're continually looking for better ways to improve. We got to certify conscious, we did trainings, this, yes, I understand it doesn't jurisdiction, but anytime there's issue, we uh, let them know, and they go and, well, we haven't been here to help us. There's a lapse of communication there, which happens between entities. We've always about to now eat free food, to help us with traffic, to also give us any phone calls for kids who needs help. And they're busy, we're busy, but my job is to keep these kids safe. One reason I'm retiring is I, I'm gonna be able to lay down my hand for the first time in ten years, and not worry about someone across my phone and melt my, but just let me finish, let me finish. So I do, I said what I'm doing, uh, but things change, you know, we, we do have a budget, and I understand they want our budget, what we get to do to officers. I, I would rather just keep our budget, keep our operations, y'all just give us a, and give us a, as I already said, let even double. You know, but the biggest thing is this, this about building licenses, our SROs are here morning and evening, they build licenses and happen, I'm not saying they won't do that, but again, I, I, I see there's two sides to every story. We knew everything, I don't know, we knew everything, keep these kids safe, now, what do you might say, once I'm Facebook, of course we have some Facebook, it's true. Yeah, yeah, there's a bottom line, I'm just expecting everyone's trend, and our money go is to protect kids, is it not? Okay, the problem I have with this, okay, because I, I'll do whatever, whether I'm here or not to protect the child, as I said earlier, they're precious, you go outside, if someone misses with him, that's, that's not fit to hear your side. But the problem I have with this is that we got blindsided this by hearing they're coming to the school board meeting. My office is always open, I would love to sit down with the school board, all of them, with the sheriff's office, with the commissioners, with parents, with teachers, everybody that's involved in the safety of kids, and let's, let's come up with a campaign to plan to make this safer, whether it's us, or whether it's sheriff's office, or whether it's both. That's, that's, that's the only thing I have a problem with. And I asked them, and I asked these guys, did you come here on your own, or you asked them? So, okay, but it came from that, from understanding from a board member, and we talked when, then two or three other board members are for this, you know, we were all from a shadow government and stuff like that, but again, I had you on hearsay, but the bottom line is, this whole thing to be told, if somebody would have come and knocked on my door, we say again, because I have sex with, S R O's following them back, they're good, they're bad, whatever, it's my responsibility. Come knock, say, listen, let's sit down and collaborate, bring everybody involved, and see how we can do this better. That's the only thing I'm asking, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna point fingers at your job, I'm not gonna point fingers at your job, I'll point fingers at the base we need to. But let's just sit down and see what's in the best interest of the kids. Communicate, and this is not a five-minute decision, this, I tell you, I'm glad you came back, well, by the way, I'm not, y'all spoke on, on behalf of the public, but what you said is true. This, this is not a moment, spur of the moment, knee-jerk reaction when it comes to children's safety. Let's sit down, and like I said, whether who the new board is, new superintendent, new, say, schools coordinator, what I'm asking is, let's just sit down and talk this through, because y'all gonna get ideas? We gonna get ideas, y'all gonna get ideas? Let's get some different people, kids, to, these kids' parents.
Mr. Man.
It's all out there, so.
Yes, you said, why hasn't, I mean, I got Hicken County, I'm a transfer, but if you is, why to the back and never? And why does it fall into your jurisdiction when the law student falls under the speaker's yet?
That, I can't, I thought we had one, I can't refer to it, and what? I'm sorry, I'm today. Yeah, blind-sided is the word.
You summed it up, blindsided. I've been here twenty-two years, and there's been a relationship with the sheriff's department, and may I remind you that you have a check, you have state laws to follow about what you disclose about children and parents. And the statutes are very precise for the Board of Education, what crimes to reform. This isn't a blindsided hostile situation.
No.
And over the twenty-two years, I have prepared MOUs. The sheriff's department has never wanted an MOU. Now, to walk in here today and say, well, we've been, we should have had an MOU, this school system would be glad to do an MOU. The relationship we've had with the sheriff's department is you pick up the phone and call. That's been procedure. There's been times the sheriff's department can't help, we have to deal with. But you don't blindside people, and you sit down at the table. So it's time, after twenty-two years, to do an MOU. I'll be glad to turn over all the ones I've done.
But, but.
It's fine to sit down at the table, and the sheriff's department has to understand the rules you're bound by, which crimes you report and which you investigate yourself. You know, between a rock and a hard place, you have to do some investigation. But you don't blindside somebody, you work with your board. And just like we learned today, the board will not be bound in any way by any statement or action on the part of an individual member, except when such action is at the specific instruction of the board. So the board could vote today to let's take a look at working with law enforcement again, okay? I'm blindsided today. You all are blindsided, except those in plan. So the board can vote, specific instructions, not an individual board member going around, but the board can vote today to take a look at their SRO program. And this throwing out statistics, statistics like there are ninety-eight school systems that work with the sheriff's department, I know that's not true. You can't just throw stuff out.
Well, finally.
Organize me.
I, I, I.
Stop.
No, no, you, you give us.
The board approves what to do, and you could appoint a committee, it could be Chip and Hank. They, you know, to start this process, we talked about this today. An individual board member does not, is not valid action. It's the specific instruction of the board. And, and your Sheriff Hobson, um, I heard his campaign, he campaigned on trying to help with the school system. So let's do it, but we don't need to throw, we don't need to throw hostility, the board just needs to know. Is it time, is it time now, after all these years, instead of procedure? Letitia Cole picks up the phone, the sheriff's answers, Robert picks up the phone and the sheriff's answers. Is it time now to memorialize this in a writing? Is this sheriff's department ready? There's no need to be adding datters, just know this aboard.
Well.
We have to proceed with, looking at if there's a time for an MOU.
I have not found anything in ours.
I don't want to hear that, and you're always throwing out stuff.
I understand your questions, but here's probably why we've got so many people cheering in. Go to, is what is not to be answered if we sit down and talk, is that this is all playing out and it's all looking contentious online? That, well, the more we bring this out online, the more I'm afraid it gets out there about what we do to safety and safety.
I agree with Carissa, that really, this makes me very uneasy. You know, I think to sit down in a work session with all parties involved and come up with a super plan, whichever way it goes into that, because you have to look at pros and cons. It may stay like it is and it may change, that, that's okay, because you have enough stakeholder input to know that that's the right decision for the safety of children.
But why, why is it not done, been done before?
And I, I've just been.
Why is it? They could have also, they could have also.
It's a beautiful.
Hey, we have Chairman Nelson.
Yes.
We're not supposed to have a, we're supposed to go on our meeting, point of order, one, one at a time, point of order. We're not allowed to talk over each other.
You know, it's like.
Yes, Mr. Karen.
Yeah. Three, three points. It's all about kids, that's why, that's why we're here, and beyond then, relationships. And Mr. Sheriff, you're the, you're the top, uh, election officer, I guess, in the, in the county. And we all, I depend on just citizens, everybody else has it, you, you're, you're there for our safety and, and we need you as sheriff. Uh, however, you're like these five board members up here. We're all elected every four years. Elections can change, we know that, I mean, that's just, that's just fact, people, elections, what was it, one, past, present, set, elections have consequences. Oh, yeah, but, uh, so with that being said, you know, I don't have a crystal ball, maybe you do, maybe you get a crystal ball. But I don't know who's the next sheriff, but, and, and will that sheriff be like-minded as you? And as far as what he or she is willing to do with our SRO program? I can't answer that.
But Mr. Karen.
What, what, just me now? I didn't ask, I didn't interrupt you, so just like, and I said, you give me a chance to say my two or three points, then I'm gonna hush, okay? But like I say, we're, we're elected officials, we don't know what's coming around. We, our kids and our staff, which a lot of them are represented here today, and retired staff as well, uh, would agree with me. They deserve consistency, they deserve it. And to me, to me, the best way to preserve that consistency is going back to what Mel said, don't fix it if it's not broke. But everything can be improved, we know that. And, and I agree with you, Mr. Moody is giving his life to, to the safety of our, to the safety of our schools. But our kids, our faculty deserve consistency, we need to keep that in mind. That's important, they deserve consistency.
I think you made a valid point, Mr. Karen.
So, uh, but I agree, there's nothing wrong with sitting down at the table, this is my third point, I'll, I'll push. Sitting down at the table, and, uh, you know, see if, see if we can improve things, there's nothing wrong, nothing wrong with that. Uh, and then I'm gonna go back, I missed one more thing, I apologize, I let me out. But when I heard about this, uh, and Sheriff, I, I think you need to know this. When I heard about it, I had heard there are already, they had three votes to, to make it work already. And this board member, they've been contacted by whoever was starting, it's not like I know. But that's not the way this board should act, this board should act as well. And, and if more board member came to talk to you, they should have been authorized by the rest of this board. This is a, this is an important decision, very important, I think you, sheriff's department agree with that. Am I right, do you? Got a term to bespoke, spoke eloquent, I think you're agreeing with that, this is, this is crucial, this is an important decision. Not something that needs to be done, then. Not something that needs to be.
Mr. Karen, when you're talking about board members, uh, being, you know, old or whatever, I, I, I think, I think it's happened in, I think it's happened in my case, I mean, I, other board members talk to other board members, we have to talk to all board members.
Yes.
I try, I tried to get, I tried to get the meetings moved, that was brought up, I think, on mine. Move to the evenings, and because we're the only county that has that. And, and I think that was talked about, a bunch of board members spoke with about board members, about the way they should vote. And, uh, because at the time I was the only female, and I, I was not approached it. But now, and that's, that's mutual distrust is what that is, and I, and I think that's what we have in other school board. I'm sorry, I feel that way, but I think things are discussed, and, and, and I, I have not been given the same courtesy that you're thinking that you've not been given, I'm sorry, I do.
I'd like to respond to that, I don't think any of us talked about time. I know I enjoy, I like the morning time because I'm involved in things, other things in the afternoon, and, uh, I resent that remark, I really do.
But people can't, people can't come to the meetings, they can't come, and, and right now.
Look here.
If they're watching, okay, if they're watching, are they taking their employer's time? Do we have teachers watching right now? It's taken away the students, if we have it, that are getting, they could write their employees up because they're, I mean, is everybody, there's no.
All right, I, I, I would like, uh, motions be made from the, uh, board to set up a session with all board members and a group of teachers, uh, whichever, some, uh, workers here at the central office, parents, and anyone that's concerned about this, we need to set up a meeting. And, and the sheriff's department, and have at least one representative, and as many as you can want. And I'd like to have a motion that we do this soon. Do I have a motion from the board to do that? Because we need, even the commissioner, even one commissioner, at least, we need to discuss this. This is something that I was not aware of. Soon, we, well, and, and just we can decide that if we get a motion, if we don't get a motion.
I, I had, I had to ask, I think, I think because the sewing discourse among, among the sheriff's department and this, and this, and this, and this.
There's a request on the floor for a motion.
There's, there's a request on the floor for a motion. Well, all right, we got a motion, do I have a say? All right, I have got a motion and say. All in favor of having a meeting with, uh, representatives from all areas in this community, sheriff's department, and all of the board members, and faculty, staff, and anyone else that wants to come from the community, do I have a?
How does that work for a meeting for the board, uh, Ms. Davis, if we're gonna all be together?
How do you announce it? Just like you do this.
So it should be a special board meeting?
A special call board meeting.
Yeah.
We should invite, we should invite certain, you've had board meetings before with the county commissioners, both entities announce it. The newspaper knows about it.
What entities are we gonna have?
Has a special school board meeting, it has to have an agenda, and the agenda will be, uh, school safety.
School safety with the sheriff's department?
Yes.
No, not just the sheriff's department, it'll be school safety, y'all mentioned the county commi, county.
Commissioners, teachers, staff.
And some feedback from your staff. It's not hard, it's a special call meeting.
We make it open.
It has to have an agenda. You don't have to have public comment, because you've already given it to it this morning, you've already had your public comment. But it's a special call meeting, here's the agenda, you can't have a budget, if you don't have a budget item for the agenda, you can't have a best. The special call meeting has the agenda, and it will be reviewing school safety. And you can, you're inviting the sheriff's department, you're inviting the county commissioner, not all of them, maybe. You, you want some school administrators here, you want some school, other school employees there, it's a big issue.
What parents do we invite?
Any parents that want to come.
Parent board, do we have parent, we have parent advisory board, right?
And just we can pass this in different schools.
Excuse me, we do have parent advisory board, why don't we invite them?
Okay, that's fine.
Parent advisory board, appearing on our school.
Yes, yes. But I do have a question about that, would we only wanna invite certain parents, or if there's a parent that's really questioning about this, would they be excluded, because they're not on our school improvement team?
No.
No.
Wait, I think anybody that's interested in their child's school, school safety, because I think it's been negligence on our part with us having SOO officers under our jurisdiction.
There's a motion on the panel for me.
And I've got a motion and a second.
The purpose of the meeting is school safety. You're not gonna have a well-parliamented procedure like in England, you're gonna have an organized meeting, and if there are people that wanna speak, you're gonna have a public comment, nothing will change. It's a special call meeting.
We're not gonna have a public comment, you said.
I don't have a public comment, I'm in an opportunity to speak.
But they have, but they have to sign those later.
That's how we run it. You're not gonna have time to have four hundred people.
That is not.
You're running, you're running a business of a special call meeting, okay? And you'll stay focused on that, with the people you invited, and they can pick someone, county commissioners can pick one person to send. Sheriff Hobson can pick one person to send, parent group can pick multiple people to make to send. It'll be an organized, special call meeting. With one tongue.
But when are we gonna pay it, okay?
All right, we've got a, a motion and a second, all in favor of having this meeting. Raise your hand.
I'm not raising. I'm not.
Yeah.
So I've got two raising their hand and two not.
It's.
And I, I have to.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, if you want to have, we'll have this meeting in a timely manner, in a timely manner, will we, Mr. Nelson, you think?
I hope so.
Okay.
Because we need, we need to get this straightened out.
Yes, we do.
And keep it in open, and not have it shadowed around going, going behind people's backs.
Okay, okay.
All right, so we have about three to one, you did vote, yes, okay.
Can we get clarification on, we're trying really hard to check back here, I just wanna make sure that we've recorded that correctly.
The motion you made.
The motion you made, uh, Mr. Allison, second.
There's three to one, yes, if any opposed.
Yes, I said, you know, she voted up.
Oh, yes.
Mr. Hobson, you did an excellent. The one place that made us down, we're still, we're still signing notes, although just to thank.
Mr. Knight, did you have your hand up a minute ago?
Yes, I'm there, I can have a couple of minutes. Personally, I'll mention about the relationships between us and the sheriff's office. And the fracture there between me and the sheriff, because it's, it's not a great relationship, no fracture on my part, okay? But here's the thing, any of these guys, any of the women who worked at the car, anytime they ever come to us, never turn. Only time I turn to the web and K nine, one morning, Mr. Lee testing or something, they, they just couldn't be there. But anytime I have information that they need, my, my office always have. Here's something that really particularly bothered me. You depend on somebody and you go, he is, he's a dang good officer, he's not a good officer, he's a dang good officer. Kevin Rafferty, forty years of SRO experience, I've got twenty-one. I didn't get one phone call, not one email, nothing, saying, hey, what can we do to make it better? I'm always hoping, what can we do to make it better? I didn't get one phone call, one email, nothing. I have to hear about it through the room. That's how I, not what's your opinion on this? Years ago, the officer, Dennis Chris, we have brought the book on school safety for this particular campus, because of the high school campus. Over time, that's changed. The boss, Cody Beech, is the sheriff's office, the blueprint is the middle school, that's only, totally missed, that's only. I will own those. Okay, but not once, anybody I'm standing here looking at comes to the thing. Since then, we have updated our evacuation. Just since we've been here, Josh, he said, he said, uh, well, he said, just let you put us out. Talk about the way things are done, when we set this SRO program up. Talk about way things are done, when we set this SRO program up, Cherokee County, Swain County, and EBCI all came here. What did you guys do with your SRO program, at least for that, instead of setting up first SRO program west of Ashland? Years ago, almost thirty years ago, somewhere around that. Now, over time, I'm not finished.
No, you're not.
Please, don't let it run, cause I was, I was happy to sit back here and listen to you. Okay? They came here, they took what we had. And they took the other campuses, now they take exactly what we had, cause every campus is different. Every procedure's gotta be different based on those campuses way up. But they came here to test our opinions. I still get calls to this day from some of these under officers, some of us just to stay in touch, some of them, hey, what's happened, what wrong would you do to him? One time, any of these board members come to me and say, we need to sit down with these guys right here. Bad relationships can wait, they can be fixed.
Good.
Okay, without wanting to do these backroom deals, put down the, we're glad that's fine, they've been, been brought up. Because I've never had a run in, and I haven't called with any officer at the office. Always working, so is Josh. Okay, thank you for talking.
I speak voluntarily, I just want to clarify a situation that was brought in previously in relation to a student and a vomit. This situation was brought to the attention late Friday evening and investigated by a resource officer. One child was suspended for ten days until we further could investigate it further at the beginning of the week. The second child, we knew for a fact could not, would not be on our campus Monday until the investigation was finished. And at that point, Mr. Reed started first thing Monday morning, uh, investigating the second child, and he was suspended from school. So therefore, we knew it wasn't an oversight on the school's part, there was no two kids on this campus, they were a threat. We knew that they were not gonna be on the campus Monday morning. And at that point, they were no longer brought back to our campus.
But the sheriff's department didn't know anything about it?
Yes.
Please, somebody tell me what is going on, please, why aren't we all working together, I don't understand about that.
That's all I wanted to ask for is, is a chance to work together all the, all the deputies, all the law enforcement in Grand County to make sure the safety of the students.
I have to say something, cause I was involved with it. So immediately that morning, um, uh, Monday morning, I went down myself to Mr. Reed. We went directly to the central office, Mrs. Knox said we need to involve the sheriff's office, and that was done in her office. We all met in her office, our resource officers, and our deputies, there were several, he was there, uh, Cody was in here. Uh, another one, there's one missing, was there, and we went over this, and that's pretty fast. We did not know, we knew that there would be, I mean, either one, and we did not allow that a second child to be on the campus that day. That was the day that S, that S T, he did not take it, and he was not allowed on campus that day.
But they didn't know, let me ask you a question, something's happening in your home, do you call the cops if it's gonna be a bomb threat, if the neighbors have? I don't, I'm just saying, I would've called the cops, that's my mind, I don't care where.
There wasn't a threat, a bomb threat.
It was.
It's on my, just looking at it from home, on my.
Surged.
They started immediately, immediately on Friday and continued over that, and we had a pile of information by Monday, and when we did, they immediately notified the sheriff's office to come in and let's elaborately work in Miss Knox's office to go over all this, and that's what happened. And ended up, most of the kids were completely off campus, and they've not been on our campus since then, so I just wanna do.
It's just, it seems like that, that nowadays, a bomb threat, somebody researching.
You are not a threat.
It was maybe as if you know that someone's.
It was a shooting threat, talking about.
No, 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 no.
It wasn't a shooting threat.
We've had bomb threats though, right?
But this is.
I suggest, I don't need to like hearing, it's just difficult to even think about.
This is, this was research being conducted on the internet that took some time to even capitalize that to give to the sheriff's office. We had to go through the computers, and we had to have our tech shed open computers till we, we could hand it to the sheriff's office. And so I just wanna clarify that for our public.
Okay.
The school has a duty to investigation, it cannot let go for investigation.
Of course, I didn't suggest that, I was not certain.
Okay, let's go, let's go on with the agenda, because I think this is.
Cody, what it says.
Chairman Nelson, can we come up with a time for this meeting?
Uh, yes, we can.
Chairman Nelson, I have to speak.
Oh, that's right.
One more thing.
All right, go ahead.
Uh, this is just on my heart, and I feel like I'm gonna say it, is in nineteen eighty-six, I started my career right out of college with the Department of Social Services. That was three of the hardest years of my life, uh, I did child protective services, um, we had a, a child who was in custody, and her father was shot in the front yard, we had kids who were molested. Uh, I was very young, in twenty-two, and dealing with this, and, and it was extremely difficult. I left the Department of Social Services and came to work in the school system. It was the first time in, in the three years of my career that I felt like I could actually affect change. Because at the Department of Social Services, you were putting out fires consistently, you really couldn't help kids, you couldn't help families. And it was so rewarding to come to the school system. Since I have worked for the school system, there has not been one day that I have felt unsafe, or that I have felt like I was threatened, or the students that I was working with was threatened. Grand County Schools has done a tremendous job, Robert Moody is awesome. He puts safety over everything, and he, uh, you know, sometimes I'm like, Mr. Moody's okay, they have that broken, it's not according to Mr. Moody. He, he is very protective of all of us. I have also worked with Mr. George, great resource officer, he was so supportive, he was there all the time. But it's just like with me and my assistant principal, sometimes we talk about good cop, bad cop. There is a role for everybody, there is a role for the Department of Social, sorry, the sheriff's department, there is a role for the school resource officers. When you have an incident at the school, and the, and the sheriff's department has to be called, if, if the SRO officer is part of the sheriff's department, come a week from now, when that student comes back to school, they are not going to have a relationship with that student. Where it is now, we have SRO officers who have relationships with students, students come and tell them stuff all the time, that's how we know what's going on, that's the time. And then they turn it over to the sheriff's department, it is dealt with, charges are filed, whatever needs to be done. But come Monday morning, we have an SRO officer who still has a relationship with that child and that family.
That's not.
You have to have a good cop and bad cop.
Tonya, I don't wanna cut you off, uh, for, thank you for sharing. Uh, I'm, I'm gonna ask the board, uh, any, any day next week is fine with me, and anytime, but we need to, uh, let Ms. Knight know so she can post it.
Well, it has to be something.
We're talking about.
We're talking the eleventh through the fifteenth.
Mr. Nelson, if you're trying to get like outside agents used to be able to meet themselves and pick a representative for a usual parent, who were having an opportunity to decide if they want to attend or not, if you could maybe bump it to the week following, like maybe the week of the.
Eighteenth.
The week of the eighteenth, that's how way people could make a plan. We're gonna have it at eight.
That's mine.
I was gonna say, we've got to talk about.
We can have it five o'clock, six o'clock.
And, and I think the officers that are here today, uh, not just one, but the ones that presented should be part of it.
Like I said, anybody that wants to come can come.
We say.
Okay, all right, let's, let's set this time, uh, it's Thursday the twenty-first, okay, I can't meet on, uh, Wednesday.
Thursday, twenty-first.
Yes.
Yeah, Thursday.
At, uh, five o'clock.
Five AM, I like it that early, twenty-four, like wait.
Five o'clock sounds good.
On Thursday, five o'clock on the twenty-first of March.
Special meeting for school safety.
School safety.
Jones, I would be more than happy to open up our both departments, we need more space.
May do. Or even the auditorium at the high school.
I would recommend you go ahead and plan to have it at the auditorium that way, that nobody feels like they're left out because of space.
Yeah.
And that's my thing.
All right, so we'll meet at the auditorium, uh, Erica, would you make sure that it's open, please? Okay, all right. So we're gonna meet at the auditorium, five o'clock, school safety on the twenty-first, that's a Thursday evening. Is this just a discussion or a? Uh, this will just be the discussion.
So y'all go on at a different time?
We would have, well.
Good question.
That's a good question. Could we vote only then, Ms. Davis?
Special call meeting?
Yes.
I thought you all agreed that the purpose of this meeting was to hear from the public, gather information.
Yes.
And then in a regularly scheduled board meeting.
Yeah.
You'll make a decision.
Maybe the April.
Those major decisions are made regularly scheduled.
Okay, so that would be April sixth.
You're gathering the information, you're listening to people, you're getting data.
Right.
And then in your regularly scheduled.
Okay, so we'll vote it April sixth.
Perhaps.
That's the next one.
I don't know that you'll have.
I would just put it on your agenda if you choose to.
Right, we can put it on the agenda.
Certainly should, I mean, people should voice their opinion by then, because it was put out on Facebook, police, and our emails, and our everything else, and I'll give you my phone number, seven three, no, eight two eight, five, seven, four, eight, three, please call me. My constituents are more than welcome to call me, you are welcome to put my phone number out there, I will be more than happy to talk to you.
All right. All right, Ms. Dent, or, or you're on the agenda?
Yes.
You reached the top.
Well.
No, he's already missed bitch.
If it's okay with the board, it's been a long meeting, I think everybody's gotta go for the potty, and I know my feet fell asleep up here. So, could we make an adjustment to the agenda and do this for next month? Okay, I'm for that, if that's okay, let's just make a motion. Make a motion.
Make a motion.
I make a motion to take my to the island and look into the April meeting.
Second. All in favor?
Thank you.
Any opposed, all right? Personnel, Ms. Knight.
Who's second it is?
Chip then. Personnel, Ms. Knight.
Yes, during the close session, I'll bring you names, uh, different positions such as speech pathologist, instructional substitute, twenty-first century, uh, tutors, volunteers, head wrestling coach, and substitutes.
What policies, Ms. Davis?
No.
That's it. On the, uh, on your attachment to your agenda, your, your second policy, the policy thirty-three, thirty-three, twenty is school trips. And that's the one where we added, um, the new section H for clarification, cancellation, and refunds of field trips. Okay. Then policy, uh, twenty-three, forty-two, uh, voting methods, it's on for second reading, and, well, they're all, all free to roll for second reading. And then policy sixty-one, twenty-five, and news for medicines to students, that brings your policy in line with the clarifications of your general assembly from fall.
Do I have a motion to approve the school trips, policy thirty-three, twenty? Voting methods, policy twenty-three, forty-two, and administering medicines to students, policy sixty-one, twenty-two? Do I have a motion to approve this?
I still move.
Do I have a second, so, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, do I have a motion to go into close session?
Pursuant to the provisions of North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen point eleven, print C eight, print C six, Thursday, and one forty-three dash three eighteen point eleven, print C six, I move that the Grand County Board of Education, knowing the close session, through receiving advice from Ms. Ellen Davis, attorney for Grand Sound Board of Education, whose advice can often be pursued of the intended attorney client privilege, this advice will be general legal advice about legal issues or legal matters. Pursuant to the provision of the North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen point eleven, print C six, I move that the Grand County Board of Education, knowing the close session for the person considering personnel matters is defined in and allowed by the North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen point eleven, print C to A, print C six, and the North Carolina General Statute one fifteen, C dash three twenty-one.
Do I have a second, so, all in favor? We're now in close session. Ms. Knight, personnel.
Yes, I'd like to recommend to you for a speech pathologist for the fiscal year twenty-five, Cassidy Adams.
Do I have a motion to approve Cassidy Adams as a speech pathologist?
I still move, we have her as a speech pathologist.
Do I have a second, so, all in favor? Any opposed, all right?
And ladies, I'll give you this list, so you don't have to write the first.
Okay.
I recommend the following nine individuals for instructional substitutes. Brenda Ackroyd, Rebecca Chamberlain, Gabrielle Chamberlain, Harley Lane Key, Erica Welch, Patience Laws, Gail Wiggins, Dominique Anderson, and Regina Webster.
Do I have a motion to approve instructional substitutes? Brenda Ackroyd, Rebecca Chamberlain, Gabrielle Chamberlain, Harley Lane Key, Erica Welch, Patience Laws, Gail Wiggins, Dominique Anderson, and Regina Webster. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Go ahead.
I recommend for Twenty-First Century Learning Center tutor, Lauren Silvers.
Do I have here a motion to approve Lauren Silvers for Twenty-First Century Learning Center student?
I still move.
Do I have a second, all in favor? Any opposed? Go ahead.
I recommend for volunteers, Susan Crowe and Felicia Moody.
Do I have a motion to approve Susan Crowe and Felicia Moody as volunteers?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Go ahead.
I recommend for a custodial substitute, Zach Satterfield.
Do I have a motion to approve custodian substitute Zach Satterfield?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed?
And I recommend as Robbinsville High School head wrestling coach, Colby White.
Do I have a motion to approve Colby White as the head wrestling coach?
I still move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? All right, when do I need to read this?
Um, you can go ahead.
All right. The Grand County Board of Education will begin as the first step, a search for a new superintendent position will be an internal posted vacancy announcement. Additionally, Grand County Board of Education will begin the process of contracting a board attorney services pursuant to recent resignation of the current board attorney. That's just for information. Okay, and announcements?
So just as a reminder, uh, there is a board training with the North Carolina School Board Association this Thursday, March seventh, beginning at nine o'clock. Uh, because you'll all be together that weekend, open meeting. Um, you, there will additionally be, during, just as a reminder, on March twenty-first, at five o'clock at Robbinsville High School Auditorium, there will be a meeting, a special call meeting to discuss school safety. And then your next regularly scheduled board of education meeting is April second.
April, oh.
April second, yes. Is that everything? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? And I'm sure none is opposed.